Good evening, welcome to the November 14th, 2023 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. The city clerk will please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Present.
Esslinger?
Here.
Mughawar?
Here.
Seven present.
Leading us in invocation tonight will be Deputy Mayor Erickson.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we honor those who have come before us, including the original stewards of this area, the nominee and Ho-Chunk nations. Mayor decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
Tonight, I've got, we have students here from Franklin Elementary, as well as Washington Elementary, if Hannah and Harrison would like to come up and join us, that'd be great.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, this evening, we have Harrison Hoffman from Franklin Elementary School, as well as Hannah Gobin from Washington Elementary School, here leading us in the pledge this evening, very nicely done to both of you. Thank you for being here this evening and helping us. I forgot to let you know, Hannah, I was gonna ask you to tell us who your teacher is and maybe what your favorite subject is as well. You good to do that?
Here we go. Take it away. Who's your, who's your teacher at Washington?
Ms. Gross.
Okay, and what's your favorite subject?
Math.
Nice. And Harrison, who's your teacher over at Franklin?
Ms. Callen.
Yeah, and what's your favorite subject?
Gym.
I agree. Well, thank you again for being here this evening. I've got a certificate for both of you of your appreciation for being here.
Take that. Come on up, there's an empty chair, you won't be annoying. Well, thank you again for being here this evening and leading us through the pledge.
I promised them 604 and I followed through on that, so. So first on the agenda tonight, we have introduction of staff. Ms. Nyforth, floor is yours.
Good evening. I'd like to formally introduce you to our new city assessor, Jody St. Charles. Jody's actually been with the city for a couple years as a management analyst and was able to grow into the position of the city assessor. So we're really excited to have Jody here on staff, and I know you all had an opportunity to meet her already at the budget workshop, but you'll definitely be hearing from her more. So we just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Jody, and you know, if you have any questions regarding assessments or the revaluation coming up, please feel free to contact her. Jody, did you want to say anything?
Just thank you for having me.
Well, welcome. Next up, we have a public hearing related to the proposed revenue bond financing for community church project. This is final resolution. Lynn, can you confirm, I gotta read three times still tonight or just once?
Public hearing, so three times.
Thank you very much, and then voting right after?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. First reading, Resolution 23-555, final resolution regarding revenue bond financing for a community church located at 2351 Riff Road. If anyone is here to speak on this, now would be the time. Second reading, Resolution 23-555, final resolution regarding revenue bond financing for community church located at 2351 Riff Road. Third and final reading, Resolution 23-555, final resolution regarding revenue bond financing for community church located at 2351 Riff Road. Will consider the public hearing closed, and I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Finance Director Van Gompel, I know we got this last time and it was a good question, but would you mind just, kinda just telling the folks at home and those even here in the audience, why we're providing financing for a project like this, what it, what it means?
Sure. Basically, on this resolution, they're asking for what's called revenue bond financing, or another name is industrial revenue bond type of concept. It's not really a direct obligation of the city, even though we're backing the support of it, the debt is gonna be repaid for by the private entity, the church. So we would do the same thing, whether it was a company or a nonprofit, we're lending our ability to have, the ability to raise taxes, to make the debt service payments if called upon, but really, they are responsible for the debt service payments. So it's not part of our debt service obligation that's subject to the debt requirements from the state of Wisconsin as far as our limitations on issuing general obligation debt.
This is really more procedural, allows them to obtain this type of financing, without it, they would not be able to, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And it gives them the benefit of being a tax-exempt finance.
Councilmember Ford?
And since you didn't say it, there's no tax parimony going to this.
I think I did, but maybe I didn't say it.
Oh, maybe you did, all right.
Maybe I said it in a roundabout way, but yes, the repayment of this debt is borne by the entity, not by the city.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, you'll take the roll on 23-555.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
Next up is citizen statements to council. Citizen statements are limited to five minutes, we've got a list of people this evening, so I'm probably gonna hold you to that five-minute limit. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and that council may address in the future. First up, I have Dakota DeGroot, and then next would be Christopher Blake, if you'd like to come on up to the microphone here.
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dakota DeGroot. I'm informally incarcerated, and on my way out, I noticed there's a huge need for housing for people who are getting out of prison. And there's a lot of landlords that won't rent to felons. So I thought of, felons have like a bonding program for like jobs, but they don't have a program for housing. So I'm, my question to you guys is, could we get something where landlords that are willing to rent to felons can get a tax credit for renting to felons? That would hopefully open up more landlords that are willing to rent to felons, and hopefully also allow more people that are getting out of prison to not be on the streets to actually have a home. So that's, that's what I have here today.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Christopher Blake, and that would be followed by, I don't wanna assault that name, but Janika Heron, I hope I'm close. Thank you. Chris is not here, then we're gonna jump right to Janika, and then that'll be followed by, I believe, Bill Van Lopik is probably also, perfect.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members and staff. My name is Janika Heron, and I live in 463 Mount Vernon Street, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I've come here to talk about and bring attention to my personal experience with homelessness in Oshkosh, and the growing need for supportive, stable housing with the Housing First model. I've lived in Oshkosh since 2016, off and on. The meaning of the term homelessness means people who do not have a place to stay. Homeless people also include those who sleep in homeless shelters, abandoned buildings, parking garages, or warm-in centers. Due to lack of steady income, homeless people are unable to acquire and maintain secure, safe, regular, adequate housing. When I first arrived, I liked the weather and the warm gestures from the people who are already residing here. As time went by, I realized that I needed help. I was often in need of housing, with battling addiction and comorbid mental illnesses. However, there was little to no resources available to help me. I realized that since my experience, those resources has dwindled even more. Oshkosh is one of the most beautiful, safest, loveliest places that I want to live. I love it here and always feel safe. I've committed to being part of the solution with amazing people here at Esther as a housing advocate, for a future where homeless individuals are loved and cared for, while at the same time expected to work towards self-sustaining futures. Teach people to live in healthy, supportive relationships, which provide spiritual, emotional support, I'm sorry, and personal accountability. None of this would have been possible without the support my family and I received in Oshkosh, and I'm ever grateful. Our city can be a powerful voice in the fight against the growing homeless rate statewide. Living in northeast Wisconsin, some may not think a lot about homelessness, but it's still something that impacts our community. In Oshkosh, about 200 people experience homelessness on any given night. I come tonight to suggest supportive, stable housing with a Housing First model attached to a program that provides wraparound care. Thank you for your consideration and my regrets.
Thank you. Next up is Bill Van Lopik, and then followed by Jennifer Considine.
Good evening. My name is Bill Van Lopik, and I'm a housing advocate with Esther. I don't live in Oshkosh, but I spend a lot of time here, and our project is interviewing as many people as we can who are housing insecure. So far, we have interviewed throughout Oshkosh, over 175 people. Those are people who are immigrants, or students, or formerly incarcerated, or just people who are housing insecure. And we have gotten all kinds of data and interesting stories about what does the face of housing insecurity look like in Oshkosh. Let me just cite three specific people that impacted me as I was talking to people. The first one, and these are not their real names, is Brandy. Brandy is a single mom, she has three kids. She has applied at 30 different places to live here in Oshkosh and was denied until she finally found something. She spent over, she spent $300 in application fees in order to find a place. She would tell me, she would go to a landlord, say, "I have three kids." And landlords say, "That's okay, apply anyways." Took her $50, and the next day, the landlord would get back to her, "Well, I'm not gonna rent to you because you have three kids." Well, she said, "I just told you that," but they took the money anyways. That's not the first time that that's happened. We've heard stories like that, and that's one of the trends we hear, is, is the abuse and lack of rights of, of people who are housing insecure. Another one is, her name is Holly, and she's a shift manager at a, at a local pizza restaurant. And she works all evening long, eight hours a day, she's a shift manager, gets $16 an hour. At night, she goes and she sleeps in her car, out in the back of the parking lot of the restaurant, because she can't afford to pay the rent, and she has bad credit. So that's how she has lived for four months, for four months. The third one is, her name is Leah, and she is a 55-year-old woman who has a place to live now, but she was telling me before, where she lived, she had this terrible, her, her plumbing did not work. Her plumbing did not work in her house. Matter of fact, she would have to every day go to her former husband's house to take a shower, and she would constantly complain to the landlord, "Please get my plumbing fixed, so I don't have to do that." The landlord didn't do anything. Finally, she called the billing inspector. The billing inspector for the city came over and incited the landlord, said, "You have a lot of money you have to invest in getting your plumbing done." The landlord became enraged, and came and screamed at her, and said, "You have to bleep 'get out of here.'" She said, she was a very meek, kind lady, she said, "No one has ever talked to me like that before." She went into deep depression because of, and she had to get out, and she had to find a new place, and it was tough because the landlord gave her bad references. These are just a snippet of the things that we have found in so far the 175 different, and we're gonna keep interviewing people and listening to their stories. Some of the takeaways we've heard so far is tenants are extremely afraid of their landlords, about raising any stink, about anything happening, because they know housing is tough and housing is expensive. We have a team of advocates, and they're afraid of their landlords. They're afraid they may have rodents in their house, they have bedbugs, they have leaky roofs, but they're afraid. They're afraid to bring it up, because housing is so tight. Another need that we have seen is a place for safe, people to park their car and sleep safely. They have those kinds of places in Green Bay. We see a need for that. Where do you go if, if your car's the only thing you have? So, and we also see a need for accessible housing, as Dakota mentioned, for people who are formerly incarcerated or have evictions on their record. Where do they go? So, but we've heard good stories, people who get Section 8 housing, they are thrilled with their housing. People who are with the Oshkosh Housing Authority, they're happy with where they live. It's, it's a blessing to them. So there are good stories, but we need more, we need more of those and less of the bad. So that's what our program, our project is doing with all these interviews, is getting that word out to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one I have registered for citizen statements is Jennifer Considine. Welcome.
Thank you, greetings council members. I'm also with Esther and work as a housing advocate, and Bill and Janika and Dakota all shared with you stories tonight, stories that represent a wide number of stories that we hear in this community. And I'm here to ask, ask you to do something, and to share a few thoughts about what the city might be able to do in response to some of these stories. As you all know from the recent housing study, there are lots of people who are impacted, who are renters in this community, over 11,000, I think households, live in rental units, according to the last housing study, and they face several challenges in this market, right? Cost is really high, affordability is incredibly low, even well-qualified candidates who can come up with three times the rent to get into a place are having trouble finding a place to live. So imagine how hard it is for those with any sort of eviction record or criminal record. As a result of this, a lot of people are being forced to stay in substandard housing because they don't think there's anywhere else that they can go. And so I'm here today to ask you for three things. First, I'm here to ask you for more development, to support more development, to increase the available housing stock, but really supporting new development for developers who are going to offer affordable housing for those who are at the lower-income brackets. And to think about when we make the choice as a city to give TIF funding to a development, that we require that developer to work with low-income households and provide affordable units. The second thing I would ask is that we expand our tenant protections, and I know state law limits a little bit what we can do, but there are cities in the state that are doing more. I would direct your attention to the Racine Rents Program that offers a couple of things that we might consider. For example, they ask all property owners to register all rental and commercial properties with the city, then the city knows who owns and manages properties. If there's an emergency or a problem, they can be contacted, and those who register are offered an incentive for doing so. The second thing is for renters, Racine has expanded rental protections against landlord retaliation. Landlord retaliation is an incredibly high fear in this community. And landlords in the city of Racine cannot evict, threaten, or take other harmful actions against tenants, and the city may impose citations and impose forfeitures up to $2,000 for each of those incidents. Third, Racine also has an escrow deposit program, so tenants can pay their rent to the city while they wait for their landlord to make the changes that the city has demanded. So they don't, they don't face the risk of eviction, because that money is there and they're paying their rent on time. Finally, I would advocate that we do more to support the really good landlords in this community, right? There's a lot of older housing stock, there's a lot of people who are living in those units as owner-operators, and they're really good to their tenants. But they often can't afford to make the repairs, and then have to sell out when property developers come in. So I would ask you to consider, what could the city do in terms of a grant program or other process to support those owner-occupied rental properties? Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to consent agenda, these items are retuned, admitted, straight of nature, voted on by a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council can request an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. I've got no one registered to speak on anything consent-related, so I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on consent? Got two. Councilmember Esslinger, followed by Councilmember Builo.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to remove item number 15, please. There's a separate vote.
All right, Councilmember Builo, you're up next.
My question just got tabled.
Sounds good. Any other discussion on consent? Okay, the clerk will take the roll on consent minus Resolution 23-565.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
So Resolution 23-565, approve the polling location date and times for early absentee voting in the city of Oshkosh for February 20, 2024 primary, and April 2, 2024 spring election. Takes no move.
Second.
Councilmember Builo hit the button first, followed by Mr. Esslinger.
My question was, I just wanted to know what we have planned for communication for people that have been used to come into City Hall to vote and to try to direct them over to the new location.
We are going to be doing mailing, newspaper announcements, we have some signage, we have the sign shop making up some signs for us, hopefully right in front of City Hall. Stop, don't go here, because actually, if we have a polling location, no polling activity can be done here at City Hall. So during those times, we will not be conducting anything that has to do with the election or anything like that. If we receive anything in the mail, it's going directly there, we do have someone that comes, picks it up. So we will be doing some advertising and letting the residents know.
Thank you. Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the same, basically the same question, you know, the confusion of people coming here and all they're going somewhere else, so thank you for that. I see this as being more convenient over there, because I know that in times of the absentees and all that, you know, early voting, there's a lot of people here. So there's, so I'm trying to weigh the, the convenience factor from the, you know, the confusion part, and it seems to me like this might be a better idea to do this. But help me understand how the mechanisms that go along with this. So if I go there and vote, I know, just hypothetically, if I go there and vote tomorrow, what happens to my ballot? How long does it stay there? Does it come back to City Hall? Does it go, be put in a safe somewhere? Can you help allay the fears that some people may have? Well, okay, Sally's gonna take it from there over here, and she left it in her car, and then the next morning, oops, she left a bag of ballots in her car, and so help me with the transportation issues and storage.
Sure, the, the only time that your ballot is gonna be transferred or transported will be on Election Day. They will be securely kept under lock and key. That building does have security, it does have cameras, we do have a secure location. So you'll be able to cast your ballot, it will stay there, it's not gonna be counted, it won't, we can't do anything with it until Election Day, and then it will go to your polling location where it will be processed.
And how will it get to the polling location? Will it be a sworn officer take it there, or a member of your staff?
A member of our staff. It is sealed in envelopes, they are zip-tied, they're numbered, everything is recorded, who transport, transports, written name affidavit, what time the actual ballots left, you know, in the morning, that location, to the, the polling location and things like that. There's a, there's a track record for everything.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
On that note, I'll ask just a brief question, which, that process, that part right there, the movement of, of those early, early voting, that process isn't any different than what happens right now?
Correct.
Because they're already, they're, they're under, they're secured, they're not open, they're not processed on Election Day. That's the process that we use in the state of Wisconsin to move those, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, appreciate it. All right. If there's no other discussion, you'll take the roll on 23-565.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
Onto ordinance 23-568, approve zone change for properties located at the 600 block of North Main Street and Jefferson Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'll please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
Ordinance 23-569, approve comprehensive land use plan map amendment from light-density residential to community facility for property located at 505 Northwest Field Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Motion and a second.
Move it.
Second. Any discussion? If you'll please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
Ordinance 23-570, convert the intersection of Jocelyn Street and Adams Avenue from a yield to a two-way stop. Transportation Committee recommends approval. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
Onto new resolutions, Resolution 23-571, this is the reason everyone's here tonight, I'm sure of it. Adopt the 2024 annual budget and establish the property tax levy for the city of Oshkosh.
Move it.
Second. Any discussion? You can go right ahead, Councilmember Ford.
So, everybody settle down for the next 20 minutes or so, no. It's my last budget, it's important. No, thanks, thank you for us, city staff, everyone for working on this budget, specifically to the city manager. I was critical last year with the volume of enhancements we received, the timing of the utility-funded position requests, and concern about the blurring of our governance versus operations role that was inviting. I have no reason to be critical this year. City manager brought us a responsible budget that reflects the organization's priorities. Staff executed a process that was pretty flawless, even brought donuts, which was cool. My colleagues up here were totally, totally engaged. Now, the budget is the contract between the government and residents, and even though, you know, we joke about it, but it's the most important thing we do up here. A couple highlights I want to point out, we have a 3.99% total levy increase, that's a little bit above the CPI, so inflation was 3.1%. The primary cost drivers for our increases in spending are public safety, public works and parks, so the areas where we have the most people and stuff. Some good news, the percentage of our allowable debt, which is capped by state law, we're only using 43.34% of that debt capacity, and that's really a low point for us, in a good way. Moves us from being an outlier in the negative sense compared to neighboring communities to being comparable or actually better, and it's, that's good progress there. It's also not exciting, but the development of this budget is consistent with all the policy work the Long Range Finance Committee and Director Van Gompel's staff has been doing over the years. You know, a budget's an annual thing, but it's also the foundation for the future, and it's also us connecting the work we've done in the past and building upon it. So us having good policies around debt, around our fund balance, around our processes, these are the things that make sure that we have a fiscally responsible budget in years forward. And that's so important, because there's gonna be turnover on council, on staff, even among community priorities, but we have a really strong foundation, and Director Van Gompel deserves a lot of credit for that. If you're a real glutton for punishment, you can dig into our department-level performance metrics on page 34. It's really cool that those are right there in the budget document, because a budget is not just about spending and money flows, it's about performance. We're trying to get something out of our money. So it's really cool to see those department-level KPIs. That helps us to do better performance management. Also want to point out that we have a link in there to our department-level diversity, equity, and inclusion metrics, and that really continues our commitment to making DEI a measurable, tangible thing, a performance measurement issue here in the City of Oshkosh. And I think that's something we can be proud of. Last but not least, the document itself is getting more and more attractive, more and more interactive every year, and that's so important. You know, the budget's the contract between the government and the governed, and the more that we, as council members, can understand it, that the public can understand it, that residents and business can understand it, the more they can have confidence in what we're doing and why we're doing it. More importantly, it makes sure that we don't have issues, deficits, problems that are going to show up randomly out of the blue because we're tracking these things, and we're going to identify these problems before they become entrenched and start to impact, you know, all of us in a negative sense. So it's never going to be perfect. Budget process is never going to be perfect because needs are infinite, resources are finite, but I really think we have a document up here and a process that we can be proud of and really happy to be a part of it. So thank you, everybody, for your job well done.
Any other comments? Discussion? Well, I won't, I won't try to repeat what Councilmember Ford said, but he took a lot of what I was going to say. This is about process. Councilmember Ford's right, you know, in the past, him and myself too, have been a bit critical sometimes of some of the processes. I'm happy with this process. I'm excited for what the future holds in terms of, you know, the future budgeting processes. City Manager Olaf presented us with his executive budget. This is how, this is how it's supposed to work. This is him presenting to us what he believes is in the best interest of this community, how to move us forward as a community, how to improve upon the services we provide and the infrastructure we have, and just how to keep us moving forward, you know, based upon the direction that his seven bosses gave him, which is not always the easiest task. So I'm very appreciative of the output that himself, as well as Mr. Van Gompel and the full finance team, as well as all the departments and all the work that goes into this. It's, it's not a perfect document. No budget ever is, as Mr. Ford alluded to, but I think the residents of Oshkosh can be pretty happy with service that we provide, the value that we provide it at, and I know that the men and women who choose to work for us here at the City of Oshkosh, you know, this is supporting them and trying to help them do their jobs on a daily basis and make sure it's done well, done right, and I'm happy to support this. One of the, one comment that Mr. Ford made that I chose to note, that I think is important for those at home, those who do this job, those who want to do this job, this is the most important thing we do, period. It's not glamorous, it's not fun, it's numbers, and that can be mind-numbing at times, but you want a project, you got to find a way to fund it. You want to move a program forward, housing, for example, we heard that this evening, right? You got to find a way to fund it. You got to find a way to make sure it works within the finances that we have and the capacities that we have, and that's, this is where it starts, right here, you know? And that process starts, unfortunately for city staff, it starts right again in the first quarter, in the early second quarter, so they don't get to rest too much before they got to start talking about the 25 budget, but I'm happy with where we've come at this budget and fully supportive of everything that staff has put forward. So I want to thank them for all their efforts. If there's nothing else, after my long-winded commentary, if the city clerk will please take the role.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Beal?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
Resolution 23-572, approve financing for the 2024 capital improvement projects. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If you'll please take the role.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Beal?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
Resolution 23-573, appropriate ARPA funds for specific 2024 infrastructure projects.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the role.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Beal?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
Moving on. Resolution 23-574, award bid for Public Works contract 24-02 to Carl Bowers &amp; Sons Construction Company for Wagu Avenue reconstruction. I'll take a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? I don't have a comment on this project. What I will do is I want to make a comment just for those at home. We do lots of construction projects. You have the ability to sign up for email alerts. You want to find out what's going on, you want to get an alert, you want to get an update on that project. All you got to do is go to the Public Works website. You can sign up for email alerts based upon the actual project itself. Simple and easy. You know, for example, all you do is click on 24-02, and anything that Public Works wants to share on that, you'll get an email blast, and that goes for all of our Public Works If you'll please take the role on 23-574.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Beal?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
Resolution 23-575, approve cooperative purchase of truck chassis from Quality Truck Care Center and automated side loader from RNOW for Recycling Division. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the role.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Beal?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
Resolution 23-576, award bid to Full Service Organics Management LLC for digester cleaning services for the wastewater treatment plant. Take a motion in a second, please.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the role.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Beal?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curated seven?
Next up, resolution 23-577, this is approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to the downtown Oshkosh Business Improvement District in a total of $300,000. We do have someone registered to speak. Jessica, if you'd like to come on up. Welcome.
Hi, again. So I'm just going to give a quick little synopsis of our proposal for anyone who might be listening. My name is Jessica Midle, and I'm the manager of the Downtown Oshkosh Business Improvement District, and I'm here today to answer any questions that you guys might have about our ARPA grant proposal. The downtown bid is requesting $300,000 in ARPA funds to be used to expand and grow the organization to further serve the community. These additional funds will be used as seed money over the course of three years to create a nonprofit organization and add an additional staff person. Downtown represents a small part of the city's land area, and although it has a small footprint, it has a huge impact on economic output of the community. Downtown is also especially strong in the visitor market, representing 25% of all hotel rooms in the city. The downtown bid has played a huge role in the economic vitality of the downtown since its formation in 1987. However, the COVID-19 pandemic has had a significant impact on downtown and its businesses. During COVID, we lost a significant amount of large employers downtown, and although we have a large number of small businesses that call the district home, daytime employment is below average, limiting the customer base downtown. Downtown businesses have not only lost foot traffic from large employers, but have also been severely strained from increasing prices, supply chain issues, and more due to the lingering effects of the pandemic. Over 15 downtown businesses have closed their doors since 2020. It is important to continue to be able to provide support to our downtown business owners because a thriving downtown serves the entire community and those who visit it. With the goal of creating more activity downtown with this new organization and staff person, we will increase the vibrancy of the downtown area, increasing foot traffic and dollars spent at local businesses, and we will better the experience of those who visit Oshkosh. We hope you consider this proposal to, so our organization can better serve the downtown area and the community. We believe it is crucial to the growth and success of our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that when you guys would take questions, or I could answer questions?
Why don't I, why don't I get a motion in a second first? So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any discussion or any questions for Ms. Midle? The floor is yours, Mr. Beal.
So I definitely agree with the, I don't want to call it problems, but the effects of COVID-19 that you described. Can you help me understand how this nonprofit in this position would, you said creating more activity, can you help me understand how that relates?
Yes. So right now, we're pretty much keeping up with our neighbors for the most part, but we're kind of maxed as what we can do for our business owners downtown. We put on a variety of different events. For example, we have a very successful wine walk this weekend that 20 different businesses downtown will participate in, brings 350 people in the doors of businesses. So we would be able to create more opportunities like that by adding an additional staff person, take on more for more community events as well. The more foot traffic and programming and activity we can have downtown, the better. So obviously, having an additional staff person would allow for us to be able to do that.
You know what? I think I missed Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Deputy Mayor Erickson.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm going to wine walk this weekend, and you'll probably see a couple dozen Stephenson's there. I think my mom thinks it's a national holiday, but...
Oh, good. It's very well-liked.
Yeah, no, I, I'm supportive of this. I am supportive of your guys' work. I mean, there's a reason I live a block off of Main Street, it's because I love our downtown. And I think that if you guys can get more activity down there and help recover after COVID, I think that's, that's a great mission. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Erickson?
Thanks. Two questions. So we, in 2021, when we knew that we were receiving the ARPA funds, we set parameters for how we would be allocating these funds, and we committed to not using ARPA funds to create any programs that would have ongoing expenses. So I appreciate in your application, you did include some notes about finding additional funds to support after the three years, and I see your budget for 2027, too. I think that's, that's helpful, but I'm looking for a little bit more specifics and kind of what's, what's the plan for ongoing expenses? And then, second question, you know, we took applications from nonprofits back in 2021, so I'm curious, why didn't you apply back then? What has changed? Why now?
Okay, so first question was, how are we going to be able to sustain ourselves? I am terrible with these double questions, I'm sorry. So we already bring in a significant amount of income from events alone, so I think we'll be about $40,000 for this year for bringing in just events that I'm able to put on by myself and with volunteers. So even expanding upon the wine walk, for example, we could bring even up to another $5,000 per event. So then, if you think about adding more walks or more community events, more income could be generated that way. But in creating a nonprofit, we can also apply for more grants, and we have a difficult time right now. We still get a ton of awesome sponsorships, but it would be a lot easier for us to get sponsorships with a 501(c)(3). So that is the answer to the first question, and can you remind me what the second question is?
Yes. Why apply now, not back in 2021, when we had initially opened the application process?
So I started in 2020, so I think I was maybe just a little too new in the position to know exactly what direction I was going to take it and we were going to go. So I think we're at the point where we're kind of at a tipping point, where we are bringing in event income and stuff like that, but we just need that little bit of a boost to be able to get us to comfortably grow.
Councilmember Hayes?
I just have a, well, I have a quick follow-up about your, the question that was posed to you regarding how the ARPA funds would help you. So you're using the ARPA funds as seed money to start the 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Okay, so for listeners, can you explain the level of involvement the city already has with bid?
Yes. So right now, we're technically sort of an entity of the city. So the tax assessment is collected, and the city helps run those numbers, run that assessment. They help us with admin, those types of things. So any invoices that come through, our budget, they assist with a lot of those kind of admin things, as well as some assistance from Parks Department. I mean, we work really collaboratively with a lot of different city departments. Some of that, of course, would stay because a city will be a huge, the city will be a huge partner for us, but it would take a lot off of city staff's plate to have the tax assessment be able to just go into the nonprofit and not have to deal with all the invoicing and things that would come along with that, if that makes sense.
And so, when you say seed money, exactly how are you using the $300,000 to start the 501(c)(3)?
So we kind of broke it up into three years. So in the proposal, the first year would be used for that additional staff person and benefits, and then we have, I think it was like $10,000 to $12,000 for strategic planning and like legal fees, things that we would need to do to be able to set up the nonprofit. And then, we each year make money off of events, and then it goes into our reserves, and we end up using that money to supplement our budget each year. So, we are, we don't want to increase the tax assessment any more than what it is. So, we use a lot of the monies that we earn to supplement line items within our budget, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. And I don't have an additional question for her, but are we, I have a question for city staff.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm just wondering if the, to provide ARPA funds for the bid to set up a 501(c)(3) when the city has such an intricate level of involvement with them, is that even possible for a city government to be so heavily involved in a 501(c)(3)? I'm well aware that the city cannot have one, but with the level of involvement that the city already has, the level of finances that are deeply involved, even when it services, it's a matter of accounting, how is it possible for this funding to go to essentially a city agency to start a 501(c)(3) when you can't do that?
This is kind of the reverse of what some other communities up and down the valley have done. You may have heard that Future Nina is a nonprofit that exists in Nina. Actually, that predates their bid. I recall about 12, 13 years ago, the city of Nina was interested in creating a bid, because they only had Future Nina as organization. Similarly, in downtown Appleton, you may have heard the ADI, Appleton Downtown Incorporated. It's another nonprofit. So, the bid is geographically restricted to the, the boundaries they currently have. And they would like to get additional participation from other properties. The bid, as it's currently constructed, does not have the legal authority to assess the other properties. So, similar to what Future Nina has done and what Appleton Downtown Incorporated has done, they will approach other businesses. They could be in the bid, they may, but they'll likely be outside the bid to get their sponsorships and things like that. So, the entity will exist, I assume it'll be created somewhere over at the CBB, because that's where, Convention of Visitors Bureau, that's where Jesse currently works out of. So, they'll create a, an offshoot group that won't be, the city won't have any paperwork responsibility for, because it'll be an independent group. They'll work in tandem with the bid, but they'll be a legally separate group that whoever they talk to from a, from a legal standpoint, they'll help them create the, the nonprofit, and we won't have any involvement in that.
Do you mind if I make just a point of clarity? So, when the assessment you're talking about is the people within the bid, the businesses, pay like a lump sum of money, it, it's not the city. I mean, I think we helped to collect that, but the city is now leveraging that tax upon these people. They're not getting tax levy for it. It's my understanding that the involvement of the city is mostly just clerical, kind of the way that maybe like Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods works, right? I mean, you, you guys will help with some of the maps and things of that nature.
We are, we do an assessment. It's not, it's, it's a per thousand like a tax, but it's considered as an assessment that will show up on a property owner's bill. I'm going to look at Mr. Esslinger, because Mr. Esslinger did get an assessment when he was a downtown business owner, and it's essentially like a special assessment. Is that a fair way to say?
You're taxing yourself. A group of people tax themselves.
If I, if I may, just to, to expand on that just a little bit. From a technical standpoint, it's a special charge on the tax bill. But it's a special charge that's levied, and the amount is not determined by the city council. It's determined by the Business Improvement District that tells us what that special charge is. And then, we put that on the tax roll for the properties within the Business Improvement District, the bid. And so, when they get their tax bill, they get their tax bill for the taxes that every other person will get. But they will also have a special charge then for the Business Improvement District. So, there's no tax levy going to support it. It's, it's really a separate entity with that will present a proposed budget for you to either say yes or no. And then, based on that action, that special charge will be put on the tax bill for each of the businesses.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I think I just need to go back to my question about how are you avoiding the legal pitfalls that I can see if bid were to be granted ARPA funds to start a 501(c)(3) with the city being so heavily involved in bid right now?
I'm not aware of any challenge that would be there. The, as, as Jesse pointed out, there, that person's going to be doing a variety of things. I think the 501(c)(3) is, is one part of it, but.
There'd probably have to be like an MOU of some sort. That's typically how other organizations do it. I don't know if this is answering your question, but they will work out what types of things the city will do with the city ahead of time in a formal way, in like a contract. But that's typically how, how every nonprofit, you know, ADI is set up. They have a MOU of some sort with the, with the bid.
That's before, when they've established the 501(c)(3).
You're specifically talking about.
You haven't done that. So, you're not a 501(c)(3) coming to the city asking for funds. I'm just going to say this. I think there's some legal issues that need to be worked out. I think the city, as though, when we've talked previously about the level of involvement or the idea that the city, when it came to signage, wanted to avoid legal issues. This is one that I think we should also be looking in that same way. We can't say to some people signage could become a litigation issue. I think this may be as well. But that's, I'll table that part there, because I have other questions.
If I may, and I would defer to the city manager or even our, our city attorney, but the Business Improvement District by statute is a separate entity. It's not the city that's doing this. So, there's a separate Board of Directors, a separate governing body, a separate entity from the city, even though there's collaboration between the city and the Business Improvement District. They are two distinct entities.
I understand that. Is there any portion of the city's budget money that goes to, that goes to the bid, whether it's current salary or anything?
No. Currently, no, just in, in-kind, as Deputy Mayor Erickson and I were talking. She'd asked me a similar type of question. We, we provide, in my opinion, close to a half million dollars in in-kind support to the bid, mostly parking, but, you know, staff support, things like that. And I asked staff to put that together when the bid's original request was for general fund monies. So, the act, the answer to that from me was no. And this discussion really came from that discussion, because I wasn't in a position to recommend that to the council with the 2024 budget. I would say, unless the city attorney has something, the, each grant of ARPA funds requires a, an agreement, and the resolution states that. And actually, I'm just finishing up some, some recent ones with some of our recent grantees, and we'll have a similar agreement. So, I mean, we can take a look at that. I'm not aware of anything. And I mean, Lynn and I haven't specifically talked about that. But, but as we look at the agreement, we can make sure that there's not any problem. Not aware of any restriction within the, the ARPA regulations. It, it qualifies, because the ARPA regulations are pretty general in terms of who's eligible. But, I mean, we could take a look at that as we're putting together the, the agreement, which we haven't done yet. This, this will take a little while before we get the agreement completed.
I don't really have anything, because I haven't looked at it at all yet, haven't.
No, I understand that. We don't actually just have all the legal answers in our brain. Research is required. So, I completely understand that. I do have some follow-up questions, though, just because, and this was raised, I think, in, not only in email that was received by all of council, but just in speaking with different community members, is the process that has been used in order to bring the application or resolution to council, what has that process been? Because I know previously I've been asked about the city's ARPA funds. And even when I checked, and I know it's been corrected, the deadline for those applications were in 2021. And as of even last week, that remained. So, I'm just wondering what the processes and how is it that we're able to stand by transparency if some people become privy of there not being a deadline? But if you went on, if you went to look, there was a deadline. I just, which I've mistakenly, based on the information that was out there, told people that the deadline had already passed.
And I'm sorry for that confusion. I've since, based on that input I received, you know, I had staff remove that deadline. People had asked me, and in the past, I think even Jesse asked me, he goes, the deadline says 2021. I said, don't worry about it. After the first round of ARPA funds, it became apparent to me, and we discussed this with council, that there were going to be some delayed reactions, delayed impacts from COVID. And I think we're seeing some of them now. I think some of the comments that were made by the folks from Esther tonight are probably indicative of that delayed reaction. And I was concerned about that. Up to now, the council has allocated slightly over one-half of the funds. So, and that's over a two-year period. And we still have another year to allocate that. So, I appreciate it. And Mr. Sebula and I had a conversation today, and, and he expressed some of those concerns. And it was, we had a very good conversation. And I invited him to, to have some folks that he represents, and he's worked with closely, to meet with me after the Thanksgiving holiday. Because even if you approve this, and if you take a look at page, just forgive me for a second, on the agenda, page 213, I had a summary of what's been allocated to date, plus if the council were to approve this one, as well as an anticipated application from GoHNI. That was a conversation that occurred during the, the budget workshop. We still have one and three-quarter million dollars available for non-infrastructure type of projects. And, and I, as I told Mouché, I certainly welcome hearing from other groups that may have some ideas on what to do. So, I'll be doing that shortly. And I, you know, it's, it's probably more under the radar, but certainly, we haven't allocated anything in well over a year now. So, I think with the last year coming, the finance staff has been bugging me pretty consistently that, you know, the end of '24 is going to come faster than we think. So, now is the time to start talking with groups about possible other allocations. And as we were talking about this one, because I had to go to the bid and say, I can't support the general fund, but as we talked, and they talked about the impacts of COVID, it's like, well, you, you might be able to make a pretty good case that you've been impacted by COVID. And to me, reading the federal regs on ARPA, it looked pretty clear that, that they would be eligible. I hope that part answers the question that.
It does. So, I guess, since the deadline has closed, like, how many applications have come in?
The deadline effectively was for the first round. We have an open application, sort of using a personnel analogy. It's open until filled. So, I, based on the feedback I've gotten, we need to get out there again and say, you know, we continue to, to accept applications. Quite honestly, I haven't seen a lot of applications. The ones I have, based on the criteria that we had created, I've discouraged people from even applying if I didn't think they were appropriate. A lot of them were nonprofits that weren't necessarily social service-related nonprofits. And I don't want to embarrass any, any group at all, but, you know, there was like, well, we'd like a new HVAC system. And it's like, that sounds like a great idea. This isn't what that's for. So, I've discouraged those folks. And, you know, we've had conversations recently with some of the stuff that's been going on in the vicinity of day-by-day, I would say more indirectly due to day-by-day. But they're out there, things that we might be able to do. But we know that our homeless population, for example, has increased. And it's not, it's not due to day-by-day. It's that we're seeing this problem everywhere. So, the timing of folks from Esther coming tonight and saying, you know, let's talk about some issues. Some of those may not be able to be solved by the city, but certainly, I want to engage different folks. So, I'd certainly happy to talk to the Esther folks, as well as other groups that might, if they feel disenfranchised or disconnected, I want to connect with them and do something about that. So, we've got a year, and, and finance is going to keep bugging me, because we have to commit those funds by the end of next year. So, it's time to do it.
Finance Director indicated he might have a follow-up, if you don't mind if he, and then we can come back.
I just wanted to expand on that and just help council understand that the portion that was set aside for infrastructure, that you already appropriated projects for 2024 in an earlier resolution. If you looked at the sheet that was included to that resolution, there's still $2.2 million of infrastructure-related projects that need to be appropriated, along with this, the social component. And by law, we have to have those commitments by December 31 of 2024. So, we have one year. And sometime between now and the end of the year, I'd like to get city council to consider committing or approving or appropriating the remaining infrastructure dollars and the social dollars. So, whatever we need to do to try to bring publicity to the fact that we still have these ARPA funds available, and they have to be committed by the end of '24, the better off this community, I think, will be. Otherwise, the funds revert back to the federal government.
You have, it sounded like you maybe have some more questions. I know we have other councilmembers, too, but you're still up, so.
No, I'm just kidding.
I only saw one page, but I didn't see multiple.
So, I guess, I, my question is, based on the process that was implemented for city council and for city staff to approve, do you feel that that process has happened? And do you think that bid would qualify based on the criteria set by this council? And I only say that because in reviewing, like, past minutes and things, it was my understanding that these are, like, if it's something that is already kind of subsidized by the city, that it wouldn't be a consideration. And also, that this would go before the DEI Advisory Committee before coming here. And so, the process that this council has put in place, it doesn't seem we're following our own processes.
If you take a look at page 209, it's, it's the memo that I've pretty much used with, with most of the, if not all of the ARPA allocations for, for the non-infrastructure. There were short-term goals identified and long-term goals. So, there were, some of the goals that were identified, help those with immediate needs, help those directly impacted by COVID-19. I think in the case of the downtown Business Improvement District, the downtown businesses, because of the loss of active employment in the downtown areas dropped. You know, a good example is, you know, For Imprint, a good number of their folks are working from home. So, the downtown daily activity is reduced. So, I thought that complied. Complying with federal ARPA regulation, it does. I had already mentioned that. Politically acceptable to council and the community. Only you seven can answer that one. Ability to leverage ARPA funds with other revenue sources. I think that the, the budget that Jesse provided, I think demonstrates that. Avoid duplication of ever with other agencies and avoid duplication of ARPA funds. Really, avoid duplication of ARPA funds was intended to not double-dip if they're, they can't go. I, I would look upon it unfavorably if they were also getting county money from the counties. Although, I would say, you know, some of these other groups may behoove them, because the counties only allocated a couple million dollars out of 33 million. So, there's plenty of money there. And then, there's long-term goals, strategic plan goals. Downtown development is certainly in our strategic plan. Long-term visible impact, this is more short-term. Getting the nonprofit would give them long-term benefit to the individuals and the community. So, I think those are the criteria that I think mostly tie in with that. But can others do a better job? I would say, you know, a lot of the social programs, those were, those would probably better meet some of those needs.
And then, is there a reason that this didn't go before the DEI Advisory Committee, before coming to council?
None of the allocations have gone to DEI. But I would welcome the opportunity, maybe to say, look, we got a year left. Can DEI give us some input on this? Because if we're trying to reach marginalized groups and things like that, DEI may be a good resource for us. So, now that the clock's ticking, I think it's, it behooves me and behooves all of us to perhaps do that. So, I would welcome that. I know your November and December meetings are canceled, but maybe we can do in January.
I welcome it, not only because I think it's appropriate, but I also welcome it if that was decide, if that was the process in which was decided. And so, it's a matter of integrity that we have when we come, when the community questions us, that we're following that. But also, just because I think with the fact that 25% of the ARPA funds were to be allocated for non-infrastructure projects, and now we're also saying for, you know, social improvement projects, that that would seem to be an appropriate place to start.
Yeah. A lot of the first money did. So, there's no reason that the, the last part of the money can't go in that same direction. You know, when you think about COTTS and the Boys and Girls Club and Oshkosh Kids Foundation. So, there were some, a lot of housing, a lot of youth programs. But to the degree we're not tapping into areas of need that maybe we aren't as aware of, that we should be, I would welcome that. It wasn't specifically mentioned that it should go through DEI, but I think I'd welcome that opportunity.
For clarification on that point, or actually, I should ask, give you other questions.
Clarify away.
Quote, "Consideration should be given to any equity concerns voiced by the City Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee." There's no requirement that it had to go through their, that process or through that committee for their blessing or approval or commentary. However, I think, I think it was the intention of council at that time was that if the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee wanted to weigh in on the topic or provide guidance in terms of, we think, you know, we think these types of programming or this type of programming or project, you know, would address equity concerns, then that's feedback, or that's information that they should, you know, be supplying to us.
Oh, so that, it wasn't that when an application comes through, that it goes through kind of like, we send things back to Planning Commission, nothing like that? So, even though, I'll tell you, I read that differently than the way you do, and that's a matter, that's just what happens, even as attorneys, you can interpret things differently. I can tell you it's not written clear, because I would have read it, that that was the process, especially since it was non-infrastructure, that one would, by default, believe that that was the purpose of that. And here we are again, intent versus impact. And we have, yet again, probably slapped the faces of many, because the intent and impact are not the same. But, go ahead.
Councilmember Bullock, followed by Councilmember Stevenson.
All right. So, a couple of things that you said kind of popped up. You said, right now, staff in-kind support to bid is, is potentially up to half a million dollars a year. If they go to a 501(c)(3), is, is it even permissible for the city to still do that in-kind support to a nonprofit? Or how does that?
I don't think the bid will ever go away. It's just that the tool that they want to use to get properties outside the bid or businesses outside the bid to participate, they'll use the nonprofit for that purpose. That's what ADI and Future Nina do. And I would suspect that as, as they move along, that'll be it. And when you think about things that are on the south side of the river, no part of the bid is on the south side of the river. The bid doesn't go past Irving.
Parkway it is.
Parkway. Okay, it doesn't go past Parkway. So, anything, businesses north of there. And so, there, and even as far as here at City Hall, it doesn't go, it doesn't go to the west. So, there's plenty of businesses in the, what you and I would consider downtown, that are not in the bid. And that's going to be where they'll, that's where they'll target, the, the nonprofit will target, those areas, whereas the bid will stay kind of on their home base. Is that?
Yeah.
I heard Jesse say something. It was like, oh, I don't know if I.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to follow what you're saying.
It's not going to dissolve the bid.
Yeah, I mean, we still have all of the flowerpots downtown, all of the areas that we focus on with the bid. Those would all remain the same, and that's where that funding would go towards. If, if the bid wanted to expand, we could always look into that. If there was other bids that wanted to be formed, if the Sodas District wants flowerpots. I mean, the, the possibilities are really.
are really endless with that, but, but yes, bid-specific funds will go towards bid-specific projects.
Okay, so there's going to be three separate entities then, when we're done, city, bid, and the nonprofit, that all interplay together. And as long as there's somebody making sure that that is legal and proper and the way it's done, it's not going to be me, I'm not going to, like, I just want to try to get some clarification on how that works. The second part, Finance Director Van Gulpel kind of, kind of touched on it when talking about how the applications are publicized, he mentioned that, and I know with the confusion that we had, and you've even said you haven't had many applications since the 2021 deadline is closed, which would make sense because the application said it was closed, and you've corrected that, and I think that's great. My request would be then, if we are accepting them, to do a proactive effort to reach out. So, and just like you and I talked, it's not a, you have to know mark thing, or you have to know the city manager to, to know to ask, but be proactive so that everybody knows that, you know, these are still out there, instead of, you know, having somebody call and say, like, "Is this still possible?", and you say, "Yes." You know, having it, like, I want to get it out there.
Councilmember Stevenson, you're up next.
I don't have a ton of follow-ups, I guess I'm going to take a little pressure off of staff. Council did ask for, to go this way. Council gave direction at the workshop for you to apply in this manner, and I guess I just want to point that out there, because if we messed up the process, then it's on us and it's not on you guys. So I, I just want that to be known, so.
Councilmember Hayes, you're at the floor.
Again, so the process in which I'm pointing out that I think is difficult for anyone to ascertain is that there was a deadline process, or a deadline set in place, that deadline passed, and it's only if having a communication with someone within the city would you become privy to the fact that you should still apply. The process should be known to every single person. It's kind of where due process comes from, but that process needs to be known to every single person, and unless you are connected to someone who could direct you to someone else within the city to tell you to apply, would you ever know to do so? And so if we're talking about rounds, and I hope we're not using them loosely, but we keep saying this is another round of allocation of ARPA funds, if this were a round, that would mean that everyone, at least more than one, would have known that the round was happening and the decision would be made tonight, and that is not the case. Because when I started and applied to be appointed to this, I said to this, to come in council, I said, "I believe in transparency. I 100% believe in transparency." And so when I make a decision at a budget meeting about considering an application, I'm expecting that it's gone through the process. The information that I have today, compared to the information that I would have had during our budget conversations, October 30th and October 31st, very different. Very different, in fact, that I have so much more information that gives me pause in even considering this application, to call it a round to the community without letting others be considered in this round. And so because I consider transparency important, especially in government, and I stand by it, I don't believe that this should even be considered today unless we have opened it back up so that all are privy to it, and that all can apply, and we have what is definitely known as a round. Because this cannot ever, in any round, be defined as a, as a round. I take no issue with bid. I support the downtown as much as humanly possible in my personal life. I always support local. This has nothing to do with bid and their requests. It has to do with whether we approve it based on what we were given, when we were told about the bid wanting things within their budget, and if we would consider their application. I'm all about a process and using the process the way it's laid out. If the process is not used, and if there's someone harmed because there's a lack of use of the process, or you don't know the process, I'm definitely going to take issue with that. So if we're going to stand by the transparency, if we're going to stand by what we said as council, which I was not a member of at the time, but I would always want to support what previous council has done, unless it is a blatant or egregious misstep, we owe it to our community to make sure we have true rounds, and that it's not just those who have the wherewithal to come to city manager rolloff to inquire and then be directed to apply on an application that has a deadline that was 2021. So what I, for sake of transparency, again, take no issue with bid pursuing the same thing, pursuing what they are, it needs to be the proper process. And if there are limited funds, then everyone should at least have the ability to tap into that, and I don't think that this was the process and I can't stand by it, stand by it. I also think that there's a conflict in the level of involvement that the city has with bid and the bid's proposal to use this money for seed money to start a 501(c)(3). Telling me that this is backwards than any other process is alarming and should alarm everyone else. And for that alone, and because I'm going to be transparent, I will not be able to support this tonight.
Councilmember Ressler.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Roloff, I'm trying to figure out which angle I want to come at this, there's a different angle. I'm very much on board with Councilmember Hayes here. I feel bad for the young lady, I mean, she's done everything she was asked of to apply for it. Yeah, well, and I'm getting, I'm getting there. She applied, she came up with the program, she explained what she, and she's here in front of us, and now there's a business, so I feel terrible that she's got to be up here, but it seems to, but then, so I'm very uncomfortable in voting in favor, not of her plan, but in favor of a plan here tonight. Because it seems to me that there's been a lot of confusion of this application process. So my fear is, is that there are others in the community that perhaps wanted this money, could use this money, but didn't know that it was available, I don't know. But that's my fear, and so I guess, what I'm asking is, can we just unfortunately vote this down this evening, go back to the drawing board, and come up with a plan on how this can be reissued? First of all, Ms. Lawrenson, can you use ARPA funds in and of itself, use them for advertising that this money is here and can be available to certain types of business, nonprofits or whatever the case may be?
I think you can do some administrative costs, but I wouldn't recommend doing that. I would recommend, I mean, I think Councilmember Bullock said, you know, and I just jotted down, more proactive solicitation, and I think we can do that. I don't think we need to use the ARPA money, I think we just, just generally just do that. We use the resources of Oshkosh Media and things like that. And we can, we can do that without using ARPA monies and muddy in those waters anymore.
So would I be correct in saying, or am I being too presumptuous in saying that if we stop, go back, and do this again, there will be more people that will be applying for these dollars? Would that be a fair assessment?
I would suspect so. I mean, the purpose of that is to solicit, to get people to apply, so I would, I would actually hope that that would be the goal. And, you know, through this, through this process, especially the internal staff discussions, we only have 58 weeks to commit these funds anyway, so we, we do have to get moving on that, and this is, you know, a good wake-up call to, that we got it, we're hitting the home stretch, we got to get moving on that.
Then, with that answer, then, council, I would suggest that this be, I don't know, tabled or withdrawn or voted down, whatever we need to do here, and the staff come back with another plan and advertising this program and, you know, trying, essentially trying it over again.
Perhaps a motion to lay over might be.
Okay.
Hold up. Councilmember Ford, I don't want to cut you off, I try not to. He's got the button pressed, and then if you want to make a motion.
I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Sounds good.
No, I would suggest, people want to table, they're laid over, that's fine, I mean, that's a totally reasonable concern about, about the date, so I have no issue with that and making sure that we're proactively advertising it. But I do caution, I want to make sure that we're keeping in, in the scope here, and we had, I mean, I initiated the initial policy that we, we created, and I do not have any concerns about, about the policy in that regard, and we had very long conversation at the time, and quite a bit of back and forth about a lot of the issues that came here, came up tonight, so I do not have concerns about that. I also, I mean, the legal concerns, I'm not a lawyer, but 75% of our funds went to city stuff anyways, I, I'm having a really hard time understanding why there'd be any legal issues with that, but I still, I, the reasonable thing that I, I totally agree with you, if the date's at 2021, and that's what was advertised, then you'd have to know, so I have no problem tabling it for that reason.
Deputy Mayor, and then I'll go, and then if Councilmember, I was thinking I would like to make a motion after that. Peter Flack.
I'm wondering, I guess, if we do approve tabling it, this might be a good time to have some sort of conversation with the DEI Committee. I think that would be maybe a good opportunity for them, because things have perhaps changed and shifted since 2021. I'd, I'd like to hear their thoughts and experiences on some direction or what the concerns are coming up in the community, so we can make some decisions.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on, if you don't mind, just one second. The conversation was kind of all over the place a little bit. I have, as Councilmember Ford kind of stated, you know, he authored this, the guiding document, the principle we kind of used to start this process, we wanted to make sure that there was a process in place, this was back in a time when there was a lot of questions. We were one of the first ones to create a path to use these funds, a reasonable path to try to, to, to implement the usage of them, to segregate, you know, 75%, to, you know, to kind of allot 75% towards CIP-scored city infrastructure projects, to help move the city forward, and then to have a balance of about 25% to, where was it? To address, I can't find it there, but basically to address, you know, community needs, whether they were social programs, programming and projects. And this, this application actually checks the boxes. I have zero concerns regarding this process. I'm a process person, I've always been on that, but given that, one, that council directed this action, two, I'll just say, at least since April, council has had the opportunity to interact with the city manager on council nights, let alone other, at other times, but no less than three or four times have we discussed how much is left in the ARPA budget, the ARPA allotment of the infrastructure and as well as the community support side. Those funds have been there. The process is that the city manager rolloff scores those applications and puts forth the best ones that he deems for our consideration. So we kept it out of the council's hands in terming individual pet projects and things like that, to make sure that it was going through a reasonable process from the get-go. We still have funds available, this, this checks a lot of boxes in terms of those impacted. I see no legal issues, just because one person says there might be legal issues doesn't mean that there, there will be.
One attorney.
And, and this, they are, the funds, the usage of these funds this way is completely acceptable. A reminder, all the funds that we have under ARPA were considered lost revenue. The usage of them is not dictated by any other, other means than, you know, what we set forth for its best usage. So with that, I'll be supporting this when it comes back. I think this is a good way of leveraging funds into our downtown area that has been dramatically hit. This is still one of our lowest income census tracks, and supporting our small businesses within, within the downtown area. So this is a no-brainer. This is, this is an easy sell for me, so. Councilmember Stevenson, you're up next.
Sure, so it sounds like the sticking issue here is using ARPA funds we directed you to go that way, so I guess I'm going to make a motion to fund this out of fund balance. Can I do that? Or do we have to do that during the budget session?
I would probably bring it back as a budget adjustment and do it under, because this is, this resolution is specifically related to ARPA. I would, I could bring it back, just direct staff to, to bring it back at a future meeting using a different funding source, such as fund balance, and we could, we could adjust that.
Hold on. No, there's a motion on the floor, needs a second, continue discussion, so. That motion fails for lack of a second. Councilmember Ford, you want the floor?
Yeah, I was just, based on what the city manager just said, I have, I have no interest in changing the, the funding source. If we reopen up, just make sure that people have time, we don't, you know, we've removed the date, we advertise it. I have no issue, I think this crosses all of the boxes for ARPA funding and certainly is, is consistent with the process we've laid out and executed over the past two years, aside from that date issue, so I have no, no concern about that specific source, just want to make sure we do get the process right, because that's a legitimate concern.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'm going to move to table this, table or layover, I always forget which one you prefer.
Layover.
I'm going to make a motion to lay over this agenda item to the December 12th council meeting, that gives staff four weeks. I need a second.
Oh, second.
Any discussion on the motion to lay over to December 12th? Mr. Ressler.
Yeah, I guess maybe more for legal counsel. What are we going to do laying this over? My, my point I was trying to make is just saying no to this. No, and we're going to go back and start the whole thing over again. If we lay this over, am I not incorrect in saying that it will come back in its form that we have here now, correct?
Correct.
Let's see, that's not wrong, so I, I'm not going to second the motion, I won't, I won't, I won't be in favor of that, because it just gets back, gets us back to where we were now. It's not going to do anything. And, you know, one other thing I want to say is, you know, Mayor, I understand you like to go through the processes, and I do too, I'm a big stickler on that, but what I'm hearing from people that they're saying, that they felt they were disillusioned, or they were not informed, or they wanted this money and couldn't get a hold of it, I take issue with that. And whether there's a process that the city manager and his staff are supposed to go through, and if, if a ball got dropped and it didn't happen, you can have all the processes you want, that's not on me. But when I hear from, excuse me, when I hear from people that tell me that they wanted this and they didn't know about it, well, how's it fair to them? It's ridiculous.
Was Councilmember Ressler the second to my motion?
I was.
Hila.
Perfect, just wanted to make sure that that one's still on the table. Thank you. Councilmember Hayes is next.
I think it's necessary to be clear that it's the process in which other applicants were left out that I take issue with. I don't know the process that's employed within the city by its staff to send an application to us, because it was decided with prior council that that's how it would be done. I take issue with it not being a transparent process, because others were not privy to the ability, even the ability to apply, because of the deadline having a certain date, and whether it was under the radar, over the radar, I don't really care. What I care is that everyone's afforded the same process, and that's, that's the process. We keep saying we're all process people, but wanting to lump in the fact that we support the application by bid, that is so separate. And I think more than one person has said, it's no fault of bid, there's nothing wrong with them pursuing ARPA funds. I take issue with the process, but I also, even if it came back, as Aslinger, I'm sorry, Councilmember Aslinger stated, I would not be able to vote in favor of it without seeing or knowing more about how the startup of the 501(c)(3) will not involve the city of Oshkosh in a way that could be litigious. And there's absolutely, as using my brains, especially the one that afforded me my legal education, I will say that there is a process in which you can employ where it would not be litigious, and you can ensure that the funds and that the city is not finding themselves in the hot seat. There is a process, and as a person with a law degree who's been practicing law with brains, I'm telling you it's a process. I need that process to be known so we don't have something else coming back to city council. I need that process to be known so we don't have something else coming back to city council as other things have done because we find out there's an issue. And a month will not afford anyone enough time to get out there, inform the community that these funds are available, allow them to do the application process, send it through city staff during the holidays, and then bring it back to council in a month. That is not a process. If it took a year for us to get bid before us, and I know we have a year before all of the funds have to be allocated, we can afford more than a month. And so I will not be in favor of that motion with just December, end of December deadline on ARPA funds that do not have to be allocated until December of 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
City Manager Rolloff, go right ahead.
One of the things, and I think Councilmember Ford was looking at the Resolution 21498 that was referenced in tonight's resolution, but the timing of this is such that the deadline that was put in originally was in July of 2021. Council adopted this resolution in September of 2021. It was after the self-imposed deadline. It was a self-imposed deadline that at the time was really more about getting ideas from the public about what possible uses could be. We also did a Polco survey to get information from different groups and suggestions from boards and commissions at the time. So we got a lot of different input on different things. So the process as it's being discussed here was really more about council saying, we'd like to put a quarter of that money towards that. So, and that was done at a public meeting. I think everybody has a different definition of transparency and, you know, could we have continued to do solicitations? I would say yes, and I certainly own that. But I would say that if it's more an issue of doing more outreach, we can certainly do that. But I don't necessarily think that that necessarily disqualifies the bid, no different than should we go back and reconsider the monies we gave to the Boys and Girls Club because now we're considering the bid tonight? That would be unfair to the Boys and Girls Club. Similarly, it would be unfair to the bid for us to hold off theirs. You can certainly lay it over. I don't know if a few weeks is necessarily going to solve those other issues, but we still have $1.3 million even if you approve this and even if you approve the one that you gave me some direction on to do with GoHNI. So even after that, there's still $1.3 million left. And I would also say with some of these groups, I think the county, it was only allocated, you know, maybe 10% of their funds, could still do that. So there's still opportunities to do that. So whether you agree or disagree with the process, the bottom line is there's still funds available. And I welcome the input of people. And I think, you know, the silver lining in this discussion tonight is that we still have monies left and we still have opportunities to talk to people about what needs are out there in the community, and I certainly welcome that. And I do view this discussion as an opportunity to get the word out.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, to that regard, Mark, maybe, or City Manager Rolloff, maybe it's worth sending out, you know, I post it everywhere. Everyone, I'm sure you all follow all my stupid social media accounts, but September 20, 2021, we voted 6-0. This isn't like a, wasn't like we just made this up. We debated it, had a public hearing, all that fun stuff. So we do have a resolution guiding this stuff that we passed unanimously. And that was a previous group, and I know. We just voted last, two weeks ago to undo something we had done, and that's fine. I mean, I encourage people, if they don't like this, to take a look at the process we passed unanimously. If you want to change it, go for it, bring it back here. But I do want to make sure that the public's aware that this isn't something that we've just made up. We passed it as an ordinance, or not, excuse me, not an ordinance, a resolution because it's what we do as a governance body.
I'll forward a copy of that resolution to everybody so you have it. You can get the context of the discussion at that time.
I'll decline. I've read it in preparation for tonight.
I guess I just, can you let GoHNI know that that was the discussion up here as well? Because their application, council gave direction as well to use this type of money. And if we're doing like an all-call for nonprofits, their application will likely be affected as well.
Yeah. In my discussion with Mr. Foidick, I think they want to put some more thought into it. So I wasn't even expecting it for at least another month.
Sure.
But I will do that. Thank you.
One final comment, and then we're taking the vote on the motion to lay over. The reason I chose December 12, when we lay things over, we don't give them an unended, unspecified timeframe. We always lay over to a specified date. So it requires action in the future. Now, if council sees fit to lay it over again, that's council prerogative, and that would be completely fine if we're say yes to that. But it's also entirely unfair to an applicant to leave them in complete limbo or, you know, unsuspended limbo there. So, and the second part, I think there was a suggestion of just voting it down. Voting it down effectively kills it unless one of the prevailing members wants to motion to reconsider it at the following meeting. So either way, December 12, or, excuse me, at that point, actually, November the 28th, we would be, if we wanted to discuss it, we'd have to have a motion to consider on that agenda. So procedurally, this gives them the opportunity to still be considered. It gives staff time to discuss it internally in terms of what they've heard from us tonight, if they need to provide us additional information. And then it provides a path forward at that point on the agenda. With that, if you'll take the roll on laying over, 23-577.
And lay over till 12:12?
12:12.
Okay. Mugawar first, Builo second. Erickson?
No.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
No.
Hayes?
No.
Aslinger?
No.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Lost, 3, 4.
All right. Resolution 23577 still on the table for action or any further discussion. Seeing no buttons pressed, if you'll take the roll on 23577.
Yes, is. Erickson?
No.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
No.
Hayes?
No.
Aslinger?
No.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Lost, 4, 3, 4.
Moving on, we have Resolution 23-578, approved general development plan amendment and specific implementation plan for a hospital development at northwest corner of Oregon Street and West Sixth Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. We do have someone who has stuck around to speak on this if they'd like this evening. Lynn Detterman is here. And if you'd like, welcome, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Detterman. I'm the Senior Vice President at Data Care for our South Region, and we don't have a presentation this evening, just I'm here for any questions.
All right, I'll take a motion, a second to put on the floor.
Move approval.
Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'll take the roll unless city staff wants to say something. Mr. Nyforth, go right ahead first.
I would love to, you know, promote this project and really celebrate it. This is a piece of property along our riverfront in our central city that is being redeveloped. It's been vacant for years. And so Data Care and Freight or Health have come forward together to form a line and are, you know, creating a new product in our community and serving our central city, which includes quite a few underserved areas and hopefully, you know, vulnerable citizens. So this is a great asset for our community, and they have a beautiful facility there they are planning to develop, which will complement our riverfront and our Riverwalk very well and in the heart of a redevelopment area in the Sodas District. So staff is very, very excited about this opportunity for our community.
Seeing no other comments. All right, if you'll take the roll on 23578.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Aslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate 7?
Resolution 23579, award bid to Prima Data DFI Solutions in print for mail processing services for Utility Billing Division.
Move approval.
Second?
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, just going to say quickly that this is why we do multiple bids. I couldn't help but notice the second bid was like a half million dollars. So this is an example of city staff doing a good job getting the lowest qualified offer. So appreciate that.
If you please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Aslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate 7?
Resolution 23-580, approved purchase of 2024 IAS World Software as a Service Agreement from Tyler Technologies for Information Technology Division.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll on 23580.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Aslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate 7?
Resolution 23581, approved purchase of 2024, 2026 Backup and Disaster Recovery Software Agreement from ThinkGuard LLC for Information Technology Division.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Aslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate 7?
Resolution 23582, approved purchase of three-year service maintenance agreement to Striker Pro Care for Fire Department stretchers.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Aslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate 7?
That's the end of our action items for this evening. We're on to council discussion, direction to city manager, and future agenda items. First up is provide direction to city staff regarding parking on the recently reconstructed section of Wisconsin Street from New York Avenue to Bent Avenue. Councilmember Stevenson asked for this to be put on the agenda. We do have two members of the public who wish to provide some commentary on that. We have, Mr. Kevin McGee is up first, followed by Kathy Keats. Hopefully I have that last name right, or at least close. Again, I'm on a five-minute limit, and I'm going to hold you to that this evening as we've had some other lengthy discussions.
Yes, you have. Kevin McGee, 1244 Wisconsin Street. When I first came to the council, I gave you a petition showing that parking is overwhelmingly desired by the neighborhood. Three weeks ago, I showed that allowing parking would not inhibit automobile traffic. We would still have 10-foot lanes, which are standard for automobiles. However, there's a remaining question of the treatment of bicycles. And I have been an avid bicyclist over the years. There are currently two share row markers on the street, one on each, or two series of, on either side, one four feet from the curb, the other 11 feet from the curb, which are the minimum distances that NACTO recommends. So they are therefore 21 feet apart because it's a 36-foot street. If you have bicyclists on them, a bicyclist is, and a bicycle is roughly two feet wide. So that would be a foot over from where the tire is. So those two bicyclists, their shoulder-to-shoulder would be about 19 feet apart. That's enough space for two cars to go in between them, but not enough space for two cars to go in between them safely. And the reason is, a car is somewhere between six feet wide and six feet nine inches wide, depending on whether it's a sedan or pickup truck or van or anything in between. Two of those, let's call that six and a half feet, two of those would take up 13 feet. They need, cars need to have three feet of separation between them to drive comfortably. That's 16 feet. And state law says that they need to be three feet away from bicyclists when they pass. That's 19, 21 feet, 22, I'm sorry, 22 feet. So you need 22 feet of separation, shoulder-to-shoulder to be safe. We have 19. That three-foot difference is one entire gap. And what is most likely, from my biking experience, is that if two cars are passing between these two bicyclists, the cars are going to maintain three feet between them because as a driver, you're uncomfortable getting closer than three feet to another car. But you're not uncomfortable getting within a foot and a half of a bicyclist. That's what's going to happen. What in effect we have, we don't really have share rows, shared lanes. The shared lane symbol is supposed to be when you have a lane that a car goes down, and then another car goes down, and then a bicyclist goes down. That's the sharing, the shared lanes are. What we have on Wisconsin Street is sort of highly substandard bicycle lanes. We have a little space over there for the bicyclists, not enough space for an actual bike lane. So it's kind of a pretend bike lane that has been put there. At the Traffic Transportation Committee, they were very concerned about providing for bicyclists and encouraging bicycling here in town. I will promise you, as someone who has been a bicyclist here in town for about 38 years now, that ain't safe, that ain't comfortable, that is not encouraging bicyclist activity. And whereas if we had parking and two 10-foot lanes, we would have two actual shared lanes where the share row symbols would actually make sense and where bicyclists would take turns with cars. And I have been bicycling on Wisconsin Street for about 38 years, and it has in effect been a share row because you don't need the markers to make it legally a shared lane. I've never had a trouble, I've never had a problem going down the lane and turning left on Congress if I need to or heading downtown. So let's have the parking and keep the neighborhood happy. You'll have two traffic lanes, plenty for the cars to move, and the bicyclists can use them as well because legally they are allowed to. A bicycle is a vehicle by state law. And what we're doing now is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Keats is up next.
Welcome. I just want to say that I'm one of the persons that does not want the parking on both sides of the street because I feel it would be safer with the bikes and everything else if we had that room for everybody to use it. And my other concern is, I understand that if you have parking on both sides of the street, then people can park overnight on one side, and I was just wondering how long that is for because I have seen vehicles parked overnight on the streets without being moved for days at a time, even a couple of weeks at a time. And what's going to happen in the wintertime with snow plowing and trying to ride your bike? I just feel it's safer. Yes, maybe people are speeding a little bit too much right now, but I don't see any bikes using the lanes either. So I would have to agree with the Transportation Committee to keep it at parking on one side of the street. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I don't have any other members of the public who had registered to speak. Just making sure of that. We should be good. Council discussion. Mr. Stevenson, this was your item. You want to start it off?
Yeah.
Mr. Collins, I know is in the back. You may want to come up. I think we're probably going to have a question or two for you, so just want to make your way up.
Yeah, so I brought this back. I did take a ride out to Wisconsin Street, and I tend to agree with Mr. McGee that I would like to have parking on both sides. Speaking as a professional planner and then also as a member of a council up here, I'm definitely, I like to have those narrow streets. I think they reduce speeding, they reduce, they increase safety for pedestrians, things of that nature. And the setup that we have out there right now, I would welcome anyone to take a drive out there. He's correct. It is odd. It looks like a share row right now. There aren't actually marked lanes, and then if the lanes were actually marked out there, I think they would be incredibly small, something that we've seen in a few other parts of the city where it is, as a bicyclist, you're not going to probably want to use it. So I'm an advocate of the share row idea and putting the parking on both ends. I think our streets are probably our biggest untapped public asset. I think our streets are probably our biggest untapped public asset, and as much as we can use those, as much as we can let our citizens access those, I'm all in favor of it. So that's primarily why I wanted to bring it back. I know we also had, the neighborhood had some discussion on a four-way stop out there, and I believe that was denied by Transit Committee as well. So there were just a few discussions with the neighborhood. I wanted to bring those two things back and kinda get this bodies, gauge on it if we ever, if we wanted to reconsider those, or I guess I'll leave it up to you guys then.
Sure. Yeah, Deputy Mayor.
I can give some just background and, from the Transportation Committee perspective. I think when they took that vote a couple of weeks ago, or last month, I think, the main concerns that were raised, that we heard from residents, was about speed and pedestrian safety. And at that time, given the information we had, the input that we received from residents, the committee felt that there were other, more effective ways to address those concerns. And it sounds like for Mr. Collins that some of those have already been implemented. I think one question, and this actually came up tonight during the Transportation Committee with a different street, but maybe Mr. Collins' question, or clarifying for you, the point was raised about if parking is allowed on both sides, that people, residents can get permits to park on that street. It's a requirement to park on a street that allows parking on both sides in order to use the permit, and that might increase the congestion that we have on that street, like we've seen on others. Could you clarify?
Yeah, that's correct. So if parking is allowed on both sides of the street, you can purchase a permit from the police department to park overnight. And then if you follow the opposite side parking rules, then you're good to go. So if you do allow parking on both sides of the streets, I'm not sure the residents are gonna be happy if they have college kids parked there overnight, but that is allowed. We heard at the Transportation Committee from another group of residents tonight that are not too far from this area, that are very unhappy with the number of vehicles that are parked on their block overnight.
Okay. Any other council question? Yeah, Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess a procedural question first, then I wanted to make a statement or two. Back when I was on the Traffic Review Board, and things, there were things that were defeated, it still came to the council, much like the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission recommends denial. And so we didn't have that with this issue here. So I guess procedurally first, did we, I was gone for a while, I don't know if we changed procedurally, we continue to deal with the Plan Commission, but we don't with other commissions?
Jim, you wanna?
Sure, yeah, I can answer that. How the Transportation Committee and the previously, the Traffic Review Advisory Board, and it's stated at every meeting in the preamble, how it works is that if the board makes a favorable recommendation, then it comes to council for two readings. If they do not advance an item, then it would have to be sponsored by a council member for it to come to council. And that's what everybody's instructed at those meetings. It's read at the beginning of the meeting. Our favorable recommendations, or be in the boards, will go forward for two readings to council. If the board does not agree or recommend something, move forward. At that time, then somebody would have to get a council member to sponsor that item to get it on an agenda.
It is a little bit different. I think in the past, there had been a rule that it would show up kind of at the end of a meeting. That has been changed. It's, it still would have required a council member to bring it forward back then, but it's just a little different procedure now. For Plan Commission and some of the other ones, it's different, because like Plan Commission, almost everything is initiated by an application, it's brought by an applicant, it comes through with a, you know, favorable or not favorable recommendation, but council has the final action on it.
Well, okay, I understand that. To me, I think the easiest thing for a council member to bring it forward, much like this evening, was a little different, because I think the things that were defeated at the traffic level still get put in accounts, in our agendas, it was defeated. So if I go over the analysis of Mr. McGee and his neighbors, and I agree with him, I could say, I realize this was defeated, council, I wanna bring this forward for a vote. While I respect the findings of the Traffic Review Board, as an elected official, I wanna bring this forward for six other peoples to vote on. Does that sound like something we could do, council? I don't know if it's, does that sound logical?
That's kind of what's going on tonight.
Well, yeah, but he, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was kinda dead. I mean, there was no one, and he decided that he wanted to bring it forward. When I got reelected, no one told me that I can bring something forward. Now, I kinda know that, because I've been around for a long time, but again, it was back in the day, it was on the, it was, would come forward, even things that were defeated, if I remember correctly. And that way, then I know that I could bring something forward. Maybe some of the things I wouldn't even know about.
This, to my knowledge, predates me. This is something that the Transportation Committee has done for a number of years. Previously, the Traffic Committee. And I think the idea behind it, in talking with some other past members, was that any request, then, if you follow the logic that, well, every request should go, then the council would be inundated with some arbitrary requests. The idea behind giving the, a council member the ability to bring it forward, if they felt they disagreed, or wanted to give somebody, you know, their day in court, so to speak, that this would be the opportunity. So I think the system works, which is why, and I questioned Jim on it, and Jim refreshed my memory about this, and that's when it started to come back to me. But this has been in place for a number of years, and that's why we follow that process. But I think avoiding, you know, arbitrary items that could flood the council with requests is what we're trying to avoid. This, obviously, I mean, has merit, you've got applicant, you've got, not an applicant in this case, but you have a resident who has a legitimate argument he wants to make. The committee didn't agree with him. And I think Mr. McGee came last time and says, I plan on keep coming, and I think Councilmember Stevenson said, well, let's give him his day. And so I think the system works, and I don't think Mr. McGee, I'm not, I can't speak for him, but I don't think he had any qualms about it. If that's the process, that's what I'll do, and that's why he's here tonight.
Okay, enough said on that. One of the things that I really like about Mr. McGee, way back, from way back when he's on the council, is if you wanna have a debate with Mr. McGee, you better pack a lunch, because he's gonna come at you with all kinds of stuff. And sometimes I agree with him, sometimes I don't. Unfortunately, in this case, I don't agree with him on this. I remember going down Wisconsin Street, as many people do, before the reconstruction, it was terrible. You could lose parts of your suspension in your car, and then having to weave in and out of the traffic. And so now, with it being reconstructed, you know, the road being done, and the way the traffic is now, it's actually a pleasure to go down Wisconsin. So I understand your plight, Mr. McGee, love hearing you talk, but I wouldn't be in favor of the proposals. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, I had asked a question of city manager rolloff, and I'm pretty sure that question got to you. You provided a visual to council via email, maybe yesterday, very recently. Shows Wisconsin all the way from Murdoch South to basically, to where it connects up here down by Algoma. My question revolves around, you drive that whole stretch, and there's some differences. Would you mind talking about why there's different parking regulations as you make your way from block to block to block at times? Why it's different? But just, and I know some of it's history and some of it predates you, but a little bit of that. And then, I guess the second part is, can you remind us, just remind us why you don't recommend, in this space, double, you know, parking on both sides?
Sure. So the reason that it's different, and I don't have all the history, but every section of road is different. You know, there are different land uses, there are different demand for parking, there's some areas where there is a lack of parking, there's some areas, we get requests, as you know, every month for people want parking, or they don't want parking, and what those reasons may be. Some of it's safety-related, some of it is maintenance-related, whether it be snow plowing or street sweeping. Some of it, people think parking, as been alluded to tonight, might slow traffic down, it might not. However, on Wisconsin Street, you are in the area of the college. Therefore, there is heavy parking demand. The more, so where you allow parking, there will be vehicles parked. I can almost guarantee it, because you are in the college area where there is heavy demand. So from church all the way up to past now New York, you know, we went all the way to Bent, there has historically been parking on one side of the street for the majority of that area. Now, particular from New York to Bent, I believe you may have heard from, and I know we spoke at our last transportation meeting, the pastor at the church who also lives in that area. After the road was reconstructed, he contacted me and asked, when are you gonna put the park, no parking signs back up? And I'm like, well, we just haven't got to it yet. But throughout the planning process, there never was any intent to change that parking back to allow parking on both sides. So I wasn't even aware that it was a controversial issue until Mr. McGee brought forth that petition. But I will guarantee you that there's a reason that there was no parking there. At some point in time, that was brought forward, and it was decided that there should be no parking there. What happened back then, I couldn't find one that actually happened. However, the reasons that I do not recommend it is, A, you are still relatively close to the college area, so there will be some vehicles parked there, whether they park overnight or not, I don't know. So A, there's that. B, there is, you know, I know Mr. McGee got a petition, however, there were, as one spoke tonight, there are people that are not in favor of that, that live in that area. So, and the reasons being is that, and I know there was some discussion and disagreement about how much traffic might flow through there, they were actually saying that traffic counts might be too low, which they probably are during construction. So being that this is a local street, it almost, talking with our Public Works staff, should be almost considered a collector. Now, a collector's street, you wanna keep traffic flowing. So if you have vehicles parked on both sides of the street, that is gonna impede some traffic. Can it physically be done? Nobody's ever said it couldn't. Can bikes, you know, whether you have share rows or not, I guess in my opinion, you can, state laws, bicycles can share the road with vehicles. It's just a way to indicate to motorists that that space is shared, you might see a bicycle. So all of that, I don't disagree with any of that. I just think from a traffic flow standpoint, from a parking management standpoint, and there is, in my opinion, no lack of on-street parking in that area. I've been driving past there the last couple of months since this issue came up. I've seen maybe a few vehicles parked on the west side of the street, which is where parking is allowed. So I have not yet to hear why there is such a heavy demand for parking. So in my position, what I have to do is weigh what's good for the city as a whole versus what the residents of that street want. So in my professional opinion, I think it's best to remain no parking on one side of the street, which it has been historically, and that'll allow for the traffic flow, and I think that's the best use of that space. I know there was an argument between Bent and Murdoch, where there is, near the intersection, there is no parking, however, there's a spot there where there is. Why that is, probably because it's never been an issue. I've been driving that a lot, too, and I haven't seen any vehicles parked there, so I assume there probably isn't a demand there, maybe it's further from the university. So those are the reasons that I feel that it's best left the way it is, and that's what the Transportation Committee and our Public Works Department feel as well. So, and obviously, there are some residents that are on one side, and there are some on the other. So now that's where you guys come in, I guess.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Councilmember Bulo.
Regardless of where we're gonna end up on this one, I wanna be cognizant of how we're talking about our students. They aren't second-class citizens, and they deserve the same rights and the same parking areas that are all of our citizens. So if we're talking about this, this issue, if there's a lot of parking, it's inundating parking, I just wanna check our language and make sure we're not signaling out students. I mean, I represent them, too. So I just, I really wanna make that point, and I, I know it's a sticking issue with some people, but I just wanna make sure we address that. Otherwise, I think everything I've said, I've already said, I'm in favor of a share row here, I think it would help, and I think some of the neighbors are in favor as well, but.
Councilmember Bulo.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that you've put into this, I really do, and I just happen to disagree. I do a lot of biking as well, and biking, I want as much space as I can get, and, you know, the parking is gonna push it all together, like you said. I've driven up and down it, I've ridden up and down it, you know, since you started coming to present, so I could get an informed opinion. I'm in favor of the one-side parking. I think if speed is another issue on it, we need to look at that. I know the parking is favored by a lot of people, but I do favor looking at something to do with the speed. When I was back on the Transit Committee, we had to look at that on Jackson, and we put up the "your speed is" signs, all those different things. So we can address that without the parking, and I'm personally not in favor of more parking there.
Yeah, and I apologize if there was any negative connotation towards, I was a student at UW Oshkosh at one point. I have two degrees from UW Oshkosh, I'm a parent of UW Oshkosh, so I obviously don't mean anything by that. So there's, I do hear, though, from the residents in that whole area, you know, and we just heard from a group of them tonight on a different street, and they are not anti-student, half of them were students, they just do not appreciate some of the things that, some things that are done right, some things that are done incorrectly that caused them issues in their life.
In terms of direction, I've heard from three people, to put this on the agenda, to move forward, basically, we need, need four of you to say you're interested in it. So I've got one yes, is there any other interested parties to advance this for parking on both sides in that space? I'm not seeing enough support of it.
Because I'm not, I can't definitively say no, and I have to say something, I will have to give it yes.
I don't have four yeses to give firm direction to the city manager and his staff, so at this point, that topic dies, for now at least.
Next on the agenda, provide direction to city staff regarding scheduling for strategic planned retreat during budget. It had been noted, we'll be having twenty twenty-four as a strategic planning year for city council, city staff. I guess this is a follow-up opportunity for discussion on that. It's a scheduling thing between staff, council, and our outside consultant. I think city manager wants to probably take it from here.
Yeah, the, in the, the last time we did strategic planning, we had done it in, I believe, later in the year, but prior to that, we did it earlier in the year. And if you wanna get it done prior to budget and prior to, you know, other activities in the summer, we can certainly make the consultant available in early March. It has typically been a one-day retreat, and I wanted to get that out there, so you could put it on your calendars. I will tell you that we're gonna change up a little bit with State of the City this year, and I know sometimes that becomes an obligation. We're gonna do it virtual, based on the feedback we've gotten. We're gonna do other things, and I'll be doing some other things, but we aren't gonna have an event, so that'll free you up in March, that you can do, that you can devote a day if it meets your schedule. So we're looking at like the first full week of March, if you wanna put it on your calendar. If there are any specific dates, please let us know. We wanted to avoid any type of spring break conflicts with either the university or the schools, but we felt early March would probably enable us to pull this off. I welcome your feedback on that, and just see if we wanna start scheduling that. We're working with, we've selected a new consultant, Nicole Lance is not available, so we've got somebody who's done very well in the upper Midwest, so maybe Nicole was too far away, she came from Arizona, maybe she doesn't like coming in the winter, I don't know. But we've got a new person that I think will do a good job as well.
I think if, if you could work out, I think last time, last couple of times, it's usually some sort of, hey, here's five dates, you know, which ones can you make, which ones can't you? If you can send something out, maybe check with the consultant, see when they're available, and then see what our availability is from there? See where it matches up best.
Very good.
Is this in Hawaii? Isn't this in Hawaii?
I wish, but this consultant comes from Minneapolis, so we, you know, if we go to her, it's still gonna, it's gonna be cold.
We approved the budget earlier, we would need amendment.
Wait, 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 there's a lot of ARPA funds left over.
But, all right, just, just, just to tease you.
Might be, might be too soon for that.
Just to tease you a little bit. Just to tease you a little bit, Mr. Mauer is looking into the possibility of maybe having it at Lakeshore, so I know a couple of you have been there.
Oh, that'd be cool.
So that might be C, C better than Hawaii, so.
That's not what I said.
I was just seeing the smile on your face, I just bet that. So anyways, we'll get some dates out and get that to you. Thank you.
Sounds good. Next, oh, oh, sorry, just wanted to make sure. Next up, continued discussion on special assessment options. So from our budget hearing last week, we had a few council members that either weren't there, got, had to leave early, didn't have the whole, a chance to weigh in on the discussion or provide comments or anything like that. So this was a placeholder to make sure that those council members had the opportunity to do that this evening. So that's what this is for. So if you've got questions or comments, now's the time.
I know I had to leave early, what was, what did you guys land on?
Sure, there, nothing was landed on, other than, you know, we did discuss some, some of the options. There was discussion on, in favor of something, you know, basically, there's, there's still some favor of full relief, there's some who disagree with that, same, same conversations we've had before a little bit, but we came out of that with no direction, only because at any given moment, we only had five here, and just wanted to make sure that, given the, the weight of the topic, that all seven had the opportunity to, to share their thoughts before any, anything got put on the floor. So that's what this is for. Councilmember Bulow is up first.
Thank you, and I'll just say that I'm sorry that I missed it, I was too busy talking about shackets at the 37th Annual Oshkosh Area Women's Association Show, and I've never said the word before then, and I hope to never again have to say it. But I, you know, I read through these, I really like, I know we've talked about buffets, different funding options before, I'm in favor of all buffets, but especially number three, option number three really jumped out to me, where we're taking vehicle registration, some general obligation, and the utility, and kind of splitting it out between those. The one thing that I really, really liked about option three is it gets us there with having a smaller portion of it going to the vehicle registration. I think that too large of a vehicle registration piece of that pie will have more significant diminishing returns over time, but also it, it doesn't spread it out enough, in, in my opinion. Don't everybody press their buttons at once.
I was there, I, I wouldn't shut up there.
You look like you want to, you go right ahead, the floor is yours.
Trying to give space, just in case there are other questions, but if we're going to go down the path of maybe naming options, I agree with option three, that was one of my top choices, along with option two. I think I prefer, if we're going to have some sort of vehicle registration fee, I would like to see it be as low as possible, so that we're not burdening folks who may not otherwise be able to afford that. So between two and three, those were my top choices.
That works well, because number two was my second choice, so.
Right.
Well, I can fill it too, but I've talked on this topic for like five years, so I've said more than enough usually on this topic.
What do you got to say, Mike?
Well, I'll just say that, right, the, right, the two things, I still think the two-track strategy, I, whether it's two or three, I mean, I could go with both of those. I just, it's important to me that there's a diversified portfolio, because if we do that, you know, a wheel tax, that's going to not only be aggressive, but there's going to be a clear reaction to that, where we're going to have fewer vehicle registrations in our, in our city. I mean, that's going to be a side effect. If we have any part of it being a transit utility fee, I think there's going to be a significant risk there, that either it's going to be a legislative preemption, or there's going to be a court case. So I don't want to put all our eggs in one basket, to me, the, the big thing is that I don't want it to see something we're just throwing out the levy, and I remain interested in seeing some of those, some of those numbers for what alternative options could be like for a scalpel approach, if these become unviable, whether it's from the legislature or for some other reason, so. Still there.
So we haven't changed yet?
No.
Okay, I don't think so. No, um, well, since nobody else is going to, yeah, a, I'll use the buffet approach, I forget what term I used last week, but everything in moderation is usually a good, a good starting point. I like the option of having, for lack of a better term, multiple revenue streams to fund this, that it's not tied to one specific thing. My concern about the current suggestion, at least, or at least my concern with two and three, not the current suggestion, my concern with two and three is that it is putting money straight into debt with no offsetting revenue source. Now, the revenue source is going to be levy, straight up. In 10 years, you know, we're going to be at a million, you know, a million and five in levy support after that, after that 10 years. You're just going to have to pay for this thing somehow, some way. So that's my one concern with that, is that taking on debt, paying interest if we don't have to, if there's a way to go straight levy support. I'm okay with saying that we put X amount of dollars from our levy into our roads and our transportation system, our sidewalks, whatever part of it, I think that's okay, that we do that. I don't like the idea of taking on debt just for it, without an offsetting revenue source. So that's my concern with just obligation debt. I like, I like the option of having a vehicle registration fee and the utility, because in the end, all ratepayers will be paying towards it. Now, it needs to be clear, residential ratepayers, by and large, are going to pay more than all the other ratepayers. In a lot of the analysis we've done over the years, there's been a fair and equitable balancing act, and that was, that was one of the key things, was, you know, fair and equitable way of doing this, because we think that there has to be one. But residential customers, you know, under a VRF and a, and a utility would end up paying a bit more. But I like that the utility, utility coverage means that, you know, institutional users are still paying towards this, to making sure that, that, that's a function that they're paying towards. I'd probably be more inclined for a $20, $25 VRF, which would generate one, you know, 1.2, putting that with the eight-foot trench, that's a 2.2, eight-foot trench covered by the utilities, that's roughly 2 and 1/4 million, so now that puts you at 3 and 1/2 million.
Is this an option, or is this one?
I'm kind of creating one, I'm, I'm morphing, I'm morphing the Frankenstein, there you go, morphing the two a little bit. So, so that, the 2.25 plus, you know, a $25 vehicle registration fee basically puts you at 3 and 1/2 million, and you're about, you're a half to three-quarters away. And in my opinion, there is room in the levy for that. It doesn't have to be debt, but I know the finance director's going to weigh in, and he can now if he'd like, since nobody else wants to press their button.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be remiss if I didn't remind you, while it's a great idea, and I totally is on board with your suggestion, unfortunately, with the current state of Wisconsin limitations on municipalities, in the terms of levy limits, we are limited to the adjustments equal to net new construction. So while it may be preferred to have some of this money go directly, or paid directly by levy dollars, there is a carve-out on levy limits for general obligation debt. So the way it would have, probably have to work, whether you like it or the council likes it or not, is you'd have to go down that debt path in order to get the taxpayers to reimburse the general obligation debt, which means more interest cost, because of the levy limitations that are currently in play, and I don't foresee that being adjusted. So right now, through our budget process, we didn't really talk about it in the workshops, but I did go through the process of looking at our levy limits. Levy limits are still a thing. We have a one-year reprieve on the expenditure restraint program restrictions, but that'll come back into play in your 2025 budget because of differences in shared revenue. The expenditure restraint program or restrictions are basically on hold for one year. So unfortunately, the state has, has tied your hands on you locally being able to prefer to have levy dollars going towards this new endeavor.
What was the levy, what's our levy limit for '24?
I did not bring that with me, but I, we could certainly provide that information to you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Didn't we, we just approved the levy, right? Or we?
We approved the levy, but the state.
We, we approved the levy, and the, the, the mechanics right now is, the mechanics of using those levy limits gives us an exception for debt. The city has not taken full advantage, or had to have taken full advantage, of the ability to use general obligation debt payments to offset that. So we, we have basically unused ability to tap into the exception for general obligation debt. We haven't done that to a full 100%. We have probably, in the next two to three years, that exception's going to be consumed, and we will be, the city will be faced with very hard and very difficult decisions on levy limits. I, my, my rough calculation, again, I will get you the calculation, is within, I think, the next two to three budget cycles, you will be facing some difficult decisions in dealing with staying within the, the levy limit caps imposed by the state of Wisconsin. And I will certainly provide that either by memorandum or, or another item for consideration at a future time, but the levy limit thing will come into play.
Yeah, Councilmember Bulow.
I have a, I guess, a reverse question, because we're supposed to be giving you direction, but you're the one here that has a finance degree, so of these options, like, in terms of the accounting and money, like, what stands out to you as the most viable?
You know, it depends on a policy decision that the elected officials of this community wanted to pursue, and I've been involved in different communities that have different philosophies. And the philosophy used in Oshkosh is used by a number of communities, in which, when you do street improvements, you have costs that are borne by abutting property owners in the terms of special assessments. There are a number of communities, though there are very few, that have, in the past, taken on that burden of street reconstruction, all with levy dollars or general obligation dollars. However, they were done prior to the institution of levy limits, and now decide to go to that path of, of having levy dollars go towards street improvements would be very limiting for the city of Oshkosh. From my standpoint, if you were trying to reduce, or minimize, or eliminate special assessments, the options that have multiple revenue streams is very good. I think options two or three are very doable. But you have to also then weigh, as the mayor talked about, and we haven't done that with our future debt projections of having this built into future levies or future issuance of debt. So I would, you know, we could work on options two or three, but there is going to be some impact then on how much debt you can take on going into the future. We had a large discussion with Long Range Finance and City Council about what's that framework for future debt. If we go down this path, we're going to have to revisit that framework. We, we've made a commitment for the next 10 years to address facilities, we would have to make adjustments to our, our future debt appetite if we were going to take on more debt for street construction. So that'll be something else that would have to be reviewed as we go through this process.
I'm good with two or three as well, if I haven't said it.
I mean, that's why I'm here, if people want to see more specifics about two or three. Maybe it's worth Director Van Gompo trying to figure out what, what those implications would be.
Yeah, I think from a staff perspective, on either option two or three, we need to do some more internal calculations. As, as you discuss options two or three, part of that component is taking part of those street costs and, and moving some of those street costs into utilities, with the understanding that the utilities are causing, you know, after we repair the utilities underground, we have to disrupt the service of the street and replace that. So if we start allocating a portion of our street cost for a six-foot trench, so to speak, on a 32-foot, 34-foot street, you know, that's a certain percentage. That allocation of cost to the utilities is something that's going to impact the utility rates in the future. And we need to, number one, look at, and we're in the process of getting to council, what the future utility rate structures might look at, but we also have to go back to our consultant and try to take those capital costs, and, and James, I think we were talking about 600, 750,000?
Yeah, the, the eight-foot trench is approximately $750,000 per utility impact for 2024.
So we owe it to you to give you what that impact of that $750,000 being moved to the utilities will do to utility rates, and I don't have that answer. I don't know if we'll have that by November, we may have that by December. We were hoping either the next meeting in November or December to give you some more rate information. As it looks right now, without considering the special assessments, we're okay on the stormwater and sanitary sewer rates being held at zero, I'm going, excuse me, I spoke. The sanitary sewer, we are looking for an adjustment of sanitary sewer rates without this, just to meet our sanitary sewer expenses. To the tune, right now, we're looking at about 7% increase in the sewer rates, just to cover normal costs. We have to go back and figure out if we add 700,000 of capital projects, what that does to the rate long-term. We do a 10-year look into the future of what those rates need to be to cover capital projects that we have in our CIP, and to project what our ongoing operation and maintenance expenses will be for the utility. So we're still in that process, and we're hoping to have that to you in November or December.
Yeah, I think we're, we're hoping for the 28th, we're, we're trying to fine-tune some of that analysis, yet between Mr. Van Gompo and I, we've been spending a lot of time with, with Ellers and with our staff.
Councilmember Bulow.
Thank you. Not to throw another wrench into it, I know we also had talked, and it seemed to be pretty palatable to do a, not a complete wipeout of special assessments minus the utility portion, but a, a floor was another thing that we had talked about, and if that's something that we can perhaps approach that would be better for GRO debt, it's still more equitable than what we have now, it, it seems like we're getting closer to something, but I'd really like to see the effects of, you know, option two, option three, as it is now, versus the option two and option three, what that would have to look like to do, I believe it was a $5,000 floor that we were talking about, is that correct?
Yes, that was, that was one of the options. And we've taken a look, and we've had some outside council take a look at that, and they've got some concerns based on some cases, so we'd have to do.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, and that's, you know, because that was the one that I was actually advocating, and even the ceiling, the floor and the ceiling is a little questionable. There's some obscure case, although I should, I say obscure, but it comes from Green Lake, so it's not that far away, but it looks like that could negatively impact our, impact our ability to do that.
I withdraw my statement.
Oh, that's okay, I, I have to keep my own words on that one.
Do you know, same answer, all of the other communities are doing the floor? I know I shared examples of cap, but so.
Yeah, I have no.
And as, as Councilman Hayes said, or Councilman. And as, as Councilman Hayes said, or Councilman Hayes said before, just because people are doing it, doesn't mean it's not legally problematic.
It was more, I think we came up with that ourselves. We were just trying to, try to find some, and the whole equity issue came up, and that's where we came up with this. And we didn't copy that. That was our own little ingenious plot, but Lynn has her job to do, and she brought in some outside counsel to advise us on it. They're the ones typically represent us with lawsuits. So they, they gave us some stuff, and one was from Green Lake that's kind of putting the kibosh on that one.
Okay. In terms of 2024, the numbers we're using is based on 24. A $25 V, I looked at my math again, it turns out my, the combination of the two basically got, gets us there. A $25 VRF and an eight-foot trench covered by the three utilities generates roughly three and a half million. Roughly, you're basically there. So I do, I know we need to see that, what the impact is to the taxpayers. And I think what we really are looking for, what I, I wouldn't expect it to be a full case study. What's the average homeowner? That's how we gauge a lot of the stuff we do, right? What's the average homeowner impact of that decision? I think that's fair for us to, to use as a barometer in making a reasonable decision. A couple of things, I know City Manager Roloff at times has been vocally against a vehicle registration fee for, for good reasons. I think where some of the previous or some of the other communities that use that as a, a funding option get in trouble is that they do not put it on a regular review process for adjustment. Anything we do, especially, I mean, utilities are always being reviewed, right, annually to make sure that we're, we're covering, we're covering costs. If we went that route, this automatically goes on our fee schedule that's reviewed by council, reviewed by staff and approved by council annually. So if it's got to go up two bucks, it's got to go up two bucks, and that just has to be okay. But that's something that, for me, if we went down that path, that that's just automatically built in that there is a review cycle to that, to make sure that it's keeping up. Because to City Manager Roloff's point, I know previously it doesn't keep up with, you know, inflation and cost of goods that, you know, the dollar today is, is, you know, less than, you know, the dollar into the future. So that would be something I would want to have built in, is just that it's an automatic review, review process. I think that's, actually, I think that's probably the only thing I wanted to add. So, Councilmember Esslinger, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Roloff. I'm just trying to scan my memory banks. There's not many there, so help me out. I thought when we started talking about this, we were worried, we were worried about a litigation. One of the proposals was litigation prone, and I thought that was the wheel tax?
No, it was the transportation utility fee, the TUF, which is identified, excuse me, I'll just get back to that. Which is the top of the, the first item on the top of the options.
Okay, just tell me where it comes from. I don't.
That would be a brand-new fee that would be based on traffic generation factors that are the manual of uniform traffic.
It's the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Thank you. So it takes a look at multiple property uses and assigns a vehicle generation factor. Thus, we, it looks at a single-family house and says, your house generates nine-point-something trips per day, and we start that as the basis, and then we look at different shopping malls, grocery stores, fast food restaurants, and you assign a traffic generation factor to all these land uses.
For each and every household?
It would not, it, the homes would be uniform. The uniform would be the nine.
Kind of like an ERU unit?
Not, it's more, it's trips per day is what it comes down to. The ITE manual does that. I'll let.
Yeah, ITE has, you know, it's a part of all, you know, when a development is taking place and we say, hey, you need to do a TIA, a traffic impact analysis, they're using those traffic generation models and numbers from the Institute of Traffic Engineers, the ITE, you know, so, you know, you're not doing an analysis of each and every household. You're saying, there's a single-family home, ITE says, this is the number. The same thing, you know, as you look at, say, convenience stores, it would be a number of trips based on how many pumps they have, or their square footage, or there, there's just a number of factors that properties are classified by. And quite frankly, most of the data analysis is done through the GIS system.
Right, and but don't we have some limit base, if you will, for the equivalent runoff unit to get, everyone's got to have?
If, if I may just interject real quick to, to help translate, so if you were to consider a transportation utility fee, you would set up another transportation utility, kind of like water, sewer, and storm, and that fee would be based on land use. So the residential will be charged a fee for a residential unit. A two-family, maybe some other type of fee. Commercial use would be another base, based on the traffic that's generated. So we look in total, how many trips are being generated by a specific land use?
Okay.
This has actually been done throughout the country for at least 40 years. It just is a relatively recent phenomenon, although it's been, it's been kicked around in Wisconsin for about 20 years now, but it hasn't gained a lot of popularity. But it, what it does is it takes, like James said, traffic studies are done using this. So it's, it's, it's been universally accepted for purposes of traffic impact studies, but not universally used for, for transportation utility.
Well, it sounds like there's some logic there at least, but it sounds like it may be a little cumbersome. But I guess my, my question is, I thought the, the floor out unit, whatever, the $5,000 that I was proposing, or someone proposed that I thought was a good idea, I thought that was the litigation-free one. Now, it sounds like we need to worry about that now. Is it, did something change, or was I wrong? Did I miss something?
We did talk, I think you and I had that conversation. I think if we were going to look at something like that, then we're not eliminating the fee completely. So it depends. If you say you want to eliminate the fee completely, talking about the floor doesn't make any sense because it would, there'd be no, the floor would actually be zero. We'd have no fees.
I want to change the policy. The fee is just how you get the money, and I want to be clear, I think the policy that we have now is wrong, and it needs to be changed. How we generate the money now is changing the policy. Now you have to figure out where the money is going to come from. And so I guess I'm asking the legal staff here, if we did the $5,000 floor, and that's what we did, are there any legal issues, problems, concerns with that?
So you're talking about doing special assessments and then doing a $5,000?
Floor.
Yes, there is a problem with that.
And did we know that in the beginning? Because I don't remember anyone saying that.
This is relatively recent.
Yeah.
And that was something that I really thought we could pursue. The one discussion point that was had about the floor is that you might be able to do it if it was based on an income-based type of situation where you could give.
Basically set up a grant program.
Essentially a grant. So that's a little different than what I discussed.
Okay, how someone out here who has a law school in law, how could that be a problem if we're doing it now and we're just reducing it? How is that a problem? What legal issues do you run into?
Let me, let me try from a financial standpoint, and then I would defer to legal to help me. But I think some of the premise is when you establish a method for making a special assessment, it has to be done on a reasonable basis. And our reasonable basis is the fact that we do a certain percentage. It's a percent, it's a one-third of one side of the street, one-third of the other side of the street, one-third borne by the taxpayers.
And based on front footage.
Right, a front footage assessment. You can also do area assessments. You can do a bunch of different type of assessments, and this, as I understand it, the courts have said, as long as it's on a reasonable basis, you're okay. But if you start establishing a floor or a ceiling, you're getting into an equity issue as far as treating people.
Equity and uniformity.
Well, it's not arbitrary and capricious. You're giving everyone the same thing.
They're just giving you advice on what's happened with court cases. I don't like it any more than you.
I love lawyers, but I hate the law, I'll tell you.
Yeah. I'm sitting next to one. Yeah, so I mean.
It raises equity and, and uniformity issues.
I follow the same logic you do, but I didn't go to law school.
No, nor did I.
I was out on this one. So that one, but again, if you're talking about complete elimination of street special assessments, that, that discussion really is, you know, not necessary. So if you want to try to keep some of it alive, then that's, we did our due diligence, and it turned up that they really frowned on that.
Any more comments from council on the topic? So getting back to us with utility impact?
So we need, yeah, we need to give you that utility impact.
So we can make it informed?
So I've heard two, three, and I've heard sort of a mod, a modification of that to be a little heavier on the, both the VRF and.
Yeah.
The utility and take a look at that. So it's sort of a modification of two and three.
Yeah, given, given our future debt projections.
Yeah.
But that, it scares me putting that out there. So, but I think that's for, to Councilmember Beal's point, that would be for the finance team to share their, their information and, and very educated and welcome opinion on the topic.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. We'll get back to you.
I may have misplaced, there is my agenda. Last thing, this is the longest council discussion we've, I think I've ever run apart. This is actually good, though. We've had good discussion. Last thing on this part of the agenda is the board and commission attendance policy from Councilmember Esslinger.
Right, thank you, Mayor. Well, I, you know, just, I mean, pretty simple. The council should have received a little matrix here on attendance and then some suggestions that I had. I got something here that I didn't know that I had. It was from Councilmember Erickson and back and forth that I just kind of was reading over. So, I don't know, I just wanted to throw it out there. Again, this is, I want to make this clear, this is not some type of punishment or mad or anything like that. It's just, we, we run a business, and we have to make sure that when people come forward and they have things that they want to get done, that we kind of have to run on their schedule too. And we don't have people on the boards and commissions to do that. We create problems for ourselves and for our staff and for the community. So if I did the math correctly, even with the proposal I have here, you can be, you can be absent 35% of the time, and you're still within being on the board and commission. So with that, I'll just leave it at that and hear what everyone's got to say.
I just want to thank Councilmember Esslinger, first of all, for bringing this forward. I think it's a fantastic thing to review. One of my first, reading through the verbiage here and then the emails and everything, I never like to set a policy that says like a member will be removed because there's always circumstances. And I think that the board chairs and, and, you know, council need to have some sort of flexibility. So even changing that to maybe remove, you know, gives us, gives us some sort of a.
Absolutely.
A buffer for that.
Or if it just said will be reviewed or something.
There you go.
It comes to us.
This is what I'm talking about. Absolutely, yeah.
To be Mayor Erickson.
I think, so at first, when you proposed this, I was, I think I was open to it. And I, I think what Councilmembers Beal and Stevenson have said of adding some sort of, you know, maybe removed, I considered that, but I think I, I'm cautious in creating too much kind of subjectivity or, I guess, creating a situation where maybe a member would have to come before us on council to kind of plead their case for why they should stay on a board or commission, given maybe there's life circumstances that prevent them from attending meetings. I just don't want to be that kind of, sort of that severe and causing somebody to have to come before us. So I, my stance on it, I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I'm concerned that it's a little too strict. I don't want to be over-regulating people who are volunteering their time and experiences for our sake. You know, there's, I think we have a process in place where if there's a concern about attendance for a member, the, the chair can bring that up with the mayor, and, and then it's kind of, we've done it before where we've removed members because of attendance, but I don't think this is necessary at this moment.
Ditto with Lindsay. I, I could not have said it any better, so I'll leave it at, I agree with Lindsay.
Be the tiebreaker, Lekeisha.
You already go.
Remember, I said good things about lawyers.
That's right.
Those for self-preservation.
So I am in support, I am in support of something being laid out so that there's guidance and expect, and people know what's expected of them or what they will be held accountable to. So I think that at least having that laid out is great, and I appreciate having something so that people know that, because right now it isn't so clear. I do fall on the other side of things too, where I'm like, when people are volunteering their time, like the more you try to control and obligate that, you're going to have less people willing to step forward and do it. I don't believe that one that allows for a review based on the consecutive missed meetings, at least within that 12-week time, is severe. I do like the verbiage that was, you know, may, that was suggested by Councilmember Beal, but I also, in reviewing the email exchange that was provided within our materials this evening, I also believe that having someone who appears late should not be considered absent. So I like the verbiage that was used that said, you know, if they're able to vote. I mean, I understand if their failure to arrive promptly prevents forum, then it is an absence because you're leaving anyways, because who's going to stick around waiting for, depending on how long you would wait, I don't know. But I'm just saying, like, but if there are plenty of times, like, I can make it, I'm going to be late, I think that's acceptable, and you should not be marked absent and therefore subject to the possibility of being removed from your seat. I'm in support of having this laid out, but I think it needs to be tweaked a little bit.
Councilmember Beal.
I agree with what Councilmember Hayes said, but also I think about it as, you know, the other five volunteers that are coming there for their time to, to make sure that we're protecting their time, that we're hitting forum, so that we, we continue to do that. If we do leave it up to each chair, there's going to be, you know, different direction going on, and I like having the uniform direction, and then the, you know, the chair and the mayor can discuss if there are situations, I don't think we need to go to a full-blown review where they have to come before us and say why they should be able to continue to volunteer for us. But I do like having an overall guideline that then allows, you know, exceptions to be made, rather than just having exceptions without a guideline.
The light bulb just went off. This is going to be fantastic.
Go on. Councilmember Stevenson's going to go before you, but not.
Okay.
No, no, he had a light bulb.
No, don't let his light bulb dim. Let's do this.
Floor is yours if you want it.
Okay.
Councilmember Esslinger, it's yours.
How about, how about the mayor gets an attendance record from the chair of each board and commission on a monthly, bi-monthly, quarterly basis? The mayor reviews the attendance or the non-attendance, and this is why the mayor makes the big dollars. If he or she believes that there's an issue with some. If he or she believes that there's an issue with someone or people that are absent too many times, then the mayor can inform the rest of the council that there's an issue, and if someone wants to do something about it, bring it forward to the council. If the mayor wants to do something about it, brings it forward to the council and leave it at that.
Um, I already get that. We all get that. Every month, every council meeting we get, one of the top things in the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of X, Y, and Z meetings. Those are already there.
Mm-hmm.
One, I won't have, I, I won't support staff being a part of this at all. I don't want to put staff in a position of like that.
Like what?
Well, it puts them in a position of, of dealing with the volunteer basis that, that is our prerogative. These individuals that have volunteered, who've stepped up to support their community, they're working on our behalf. So, this would definitely be amongst the, you know, the board chair. It should be the council liaison right now. I, I just...
Well, the staff is just merely giving you an attendance. What's wrong with that?
Yeah, it's already there in the minutes, so I already get that. I review it. We all have the ability. We should be reviewing those monthly minutes, actually, as part of your packets. Hopefully, you are.
But I don't believe, not that I've seen, that there's an attendance...
At the top of everyone, present, absent. There's the attendance.
So, do you have an analysis, Lon, you check off whose...
No.
No, okay, well, that gets me back to my question.
No. Second part, at least of your, the suggestion, the mayor will replace that member, this is sentence two, I'm sorry to cut off, cut into your time, but...
You're good.
The mayor will replace that member and elevate an alternate into active status on the board and commission. That would be a change in our current policy as well. My practice has been that all alternates, you know, alternate who've served the longest will be elevated. That has not been the practice of the previous mayor or previous mayors, because there hasn't always been alternates there. That may or may not be something we want to codify, put, you know, put in stone that alternates are always elevated by, by who served the longest. It's a respect thing, and I think that's, that's, I just don't know about, you know, if we need to place that in stone or not, but that's how I will continue to do it as long as I'm sitting, making the, the recommendations for your, for your consent, that it will always be the one who's, you know, alternate who's served the longest, so. Councilmember Stevenson.
Sure. I guess I'm okay with the policy, but I would echo some other sentiments. We maybe need to massage it a little bit and, I don't know, make it a little bit more lenient, I guess, is maybe what I'm, for volunteers. I don't know if we want to say, like, if there's three unexcused absences and then we define absences, like, if someone, I, I know on Commission Simon, I'll say, like, "I'm sick today, I'm not coming in," or I, I try to keep the, the chair informed even before I was at council. So, I don't know. I, I know we've, I think this issue kind of came to a head maybe with the DEI committee, and I think it's good to have a, a policy in place to, to enact.
I have no idea what you're talking about. What do you mean? What came into play with the DEI committee?
I think, I think in the beginning, when we, when we talked about removing members that maybe weren't showing up as much.
Any other comments? Any direction anybody wants to give? I just, I've heard a lot of rambling...
I'm, I'm in favor of...
In general, not in the last few minutes, not the, not the whole three hours. Yeah, Councilmember...
No, I respect that it came up, but I, again, like I said before, ditto with what Lindsey said. I have high confidence in the review her, in a former councilman Miller did in our, in our policies, so I put a little stock, a lot of stock into that, and I just worry that there's going to be unintended consequences with some of these changes that perhaps will actually take away the ability to, to deal with things as we're currently dealing with them. So, that's a long way of saying that, you know, I appreciate that what we do now isn't perfect, but I also think that this is a, a solution in search of a problem that might create more problems. So, I'm, I'm in favor of letting it marinate a little bit. If we see more specific actions come up, maybe we go then, but for now, I'm comfortable sitting on it. I'm just one person.
Mr. Bulow.
I can get behind that. I don't think there's a big penalty to not making a big change right now.
The system is not broken. In my opinion. I don't see anybody coming forth with any further action, so we're going to table this and table a discussion on it. Future agenda items. Close session November 28th, that's the next council meeting, and the following, December 23rd. Deputy Mayor.
November 28th, the close session will be after our council meeting. That one is just for us seven to discuss, compile feedback for the city manager's performance evaluation, and then we'll come back for a close session on December 12th, after the council meeting with Mark to then go through that and have a conversation. So, in your red folders tonight, there was a copy of the evaluation form that we'll be using. This is what we've used in the past, along with the city manager's goals for this year. So, homework after tonight, come to the close session on November 28th with your thoughts, filling out this evaluation form, so that you can come to the close session and we can compile that. Also, come with some ideas for goals that you want to see for next year for city manager.
That's a good point on that one, especially the goals part. Really put some thought into that, that part of it, taking a look at, in the packet, our current goals are already, are in there. A lot of these tend, they've tended to be higher-level, longer-term goals. The state shared revenue one, that's one we've had on there for, I think, three years. We knew it was a long-term one, right? It's, it's going to take some time, but that's, that's the type of vision that, that we should try to be, you know, setting forth for him. As one who's done it before, who's, who's led the process, I highly encourage all of us to make sure we bring productive comments along with the process. It'll be Lindsey's role to compile those into, you know, some concise statement on our behalf and put forth a positive message from us, so just want to make sure that we all bring enough comments with us.
Mr. Mayor.
Did I do that okay?
Two things.
Yeah.
One, related to that, I owe you the, the latest update of progress on goals for this year, so I'll get that to you no later than next week. Give you something to read while you're napping at the turkey. And then Ms. Lawrenson and I have been discussing, there is a class-action lawsuit related to PFOs that we've been invited to join. I think it's appropriate for a close session. I don't think we want to do it after the meeting, and I think we can do it in relatively short order. Would the council be amenable to having a close session prior to the meeting for the, for Ms. Lawrenson's item and then do my review afterwards? That, yeah, you'd be here at 5:00, and, Lon, how long do you think we'd need?
I think if we start at 5:00, we'll be fine, and I also have our outside environmental counsel available at that time. He'll be on Zoom, but at least would be available for the questions. We also are, he and I are working on a memo for you. It's not quite all finished yet, but it will be by Friday, so I will get you something ahead of time. You got a memo last week or the week before with kind of an introduction to the issue. This is the more in-depth. I, I didn't want to hit you with everything all at one time, so I kind of threw out the basics in that last memo, and now we're working on more specifics, and then he would be available as well, if that, if that works for you guys.
This would be a close session before November 28th or December?
Before the November 28th, yes. So, we would have two notices, one at the beginning for, for this item, and then one at the end for, for my review item.
And I think with having given you the memo ahead of time, we can keep it a little more succinct.
Can't be any longer than tonight's meeting.
That's like a guitar with two decks, I'm excited about it. That's cool. Cool.
Any other future agenda items from council? I do have one myself. I prefer it to be placed on the December 12th meeting agenda, because I will not have enough time in between now and the next meeting to prepare it, but to, under council discussion in regards to moving away from an elected mayor position in the city of Oshkosh. I'll have background material available for council prior to that meeting. Hopefully, it'll be in the, in the packet, but that, that would be on the December 12th agenda to have a discussion.
Great idea.
Councilmember announcements and statements.
I got one.
Excellent. Floor is yours.
So, Grand is kicking off their, their campaign for getting the addition financed. They are looking at having that report to us probably sometime maybe late February in that timeline, but they've conducted about 10 reviews of potential donors right now, and they're kind of hitting the ground running, but the holidays are going to slow them down here just because of people's schedule, but just want to let you know, you guys know that that is taking place right now.
Excellent. Any others? City manager, the rest is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's three memos in your packet regarding some purchases that, by our purchasing ordinance, I'm required to report. One for our wellness engagement platform, another one for agreement for professional services regarding the 400 East block stormwater, the stormwater pond we have in the 400 East parking lot, and then a cooperative purchase of an asphalt roller. And then I also have an update on outstanding issues, and we probably talked about several of them tonight anyway, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have anything.
I don't see any. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.